Morning, Chair. Morning, sir. Morning, sir. Good morning, sir. Good morning, sir. Good morning, sir.
No? 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 Not me. Not me.
For too long, our voices have been erased.
Morning, Counselor Fortini. Can we test your mic?
Yes, good morning. I'll be about 10 minutes late. I'll be in. Thank you.
Sorry, can you repeat?
I'll be about 10, 15 minutes late.
Okay, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Check one, two, three.
Good morning, councillor Barrow. Can you unmute your mic so we can test your audio?
Good morning.
Thank you councillor.
Thank you.
As we begin today's meeting, we'd like to acknowledge that we are gathering here today on the traditional territories of the Mississaugas, the credit Horessnee and Wendat Nations, who have called this land home since time memorial. We recognize the Mississaugas, the credit, as the original rights holders and signatories of Treaty nineteen, the Jedance Purchase of eighteen eighteen, and the agreements made therein are foundational to our nation-to-nation relationship. As a city, we are committed to our ongoing role in reconciliation through meaningful action rooted in truth, justice, and respect. We are grateful to the original caretakers of this land and have ensured we are able to work, play, and live in Brampton now and in the future. Please all rise for the singing of our national anthem to be followed by a moment of personal reflection. Thank you. Welcome to our regional council meeting of September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. It's a regular city council meeting. All members are present at today's meeting. Let's see who's online. We have, I guess Mederos is right there. Okay, so everyone except for councillor Tor, which I'm told he is en route. Okay, this takes us to approval of the agenda. The clerk will go through her updates.
Through you, Mayor Brown. The following items have been added to revised agendas published on our website. Seven point one, a delegation regarding Muslim Media Hub has been added. A staff presentation regarding development charge incentives for residential development has been added, and further revised agenda added a revised presentation. Eight point one, staff update, government relations matters was added. Ten point three point one, a staff report regarding development charges by law amendment to support purpose-built rental was added. A staff report regarding downtown revitalization projects was added. Staff report regarding DC incentives for residential development added. Ten point four point three, a staff report, Sunfield Homes Affordable Housing Projects report added. Twelve point one, minutes of committee of council were added. Twelve point two, summary of recommendations from Planning and Development Committee, September twenty-second, added. Bylaw one six three, twenty-twenty-five, to amend comprehensive zoning by law for three nine four, Uranda Road, Ward seven, was added. Bylaw one six four dash twenty-twenty-five, to adopt amendment number OP twenty-twenty-three. Not sure of the actual official plan number. For Credit Valley Secondary Plan, Credit Valley Secondary Plan, Area forty-five, it was added. And bylaw one sixty-five, twenty-twenty-five, to adopt official plan amendment regarding the City of Brampton Planning Area, one three seven four three four four six, Canada Inc., on nine eight seven four, the Gore Road, Ward eight. And bylaw one six six, twenty-twenty-five, to amend the comprehensive zoning by law two seventy dash two zero zero four, for nine eight seven four, the Gore Road, Ward eight. And bylaw one six seven, twenty-twenty-five, to amend the development charges by law, as also the bylaws been added. And councillor Tor has joined us, sir.
Okay, I, no, okay, there's no on the board. I said clerk one. Okay, we have a motion moved by councillor, uh, Plessy, second by councillor Keenan to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor? Motion carries. Do any members have declaration of pecuniary interest under the municipal conflict of interest act for any matter to be considered on today's agenda? Seeing none, the clerk will so note. Adoption of minutes. We have the following council minutes before us today. City council, a regular meeting, September tenth, twenty-twenty-five. I have a motion moved by councillor Santos and councillor Bassante to approve the minutes as published and circulated. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to our consent motions. Per consent motion process, I'll read out each agenda item that is subject to the consent motion. Any member may verbally identify that item to be held for debate during the meeting. Eight point one, government relations matters. I believe councillor Santos has requested that that's held. Ten point two one, staff report, council and committee meeting schedule. Ten point two point two, staff presentation, Q two, summer enforcement performance update, hold. Ten point two three, staff report, Q two and summer enforcement performance. Staff report, development charges by law amendment to support purpose-built rentals. Sure, we can hold. At ten point four one, staff report, downtown revitalization projects. Staff report, DC incentives for residential development with staff presentation, so hold. Staff report for Sunfield Homes Affordable Housing Projects, hold. Staff report, budget amendments countryside drive widening and amendment project limits, Ward ten. Minutes, committee of council, September seventeenth. Summary recommendations, planning development committee. Refer matters list. Oh, councillor Tor?
Uh, sorry, Mayor Brown. Was item ten point four point one held, the downtown revitalization?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sixteen point one, referred matters list. Nineteen point one, closed session minutes. Nineteen point two, closed session presentation, facility security update. Hold for presentation? Okay, um, the clerk will review those items.
Through you, Mayor Brown. The following items are included on the consent motion. Ten point two point one, staff report, twenty-twenty-six council and committee meeting schedule. Ten point six point one, staff report, budget amendment for countryside drive widening and to amend project limits. Twelve point one, minutes of committee of council, September seventeenth. Twelve point two, summary of recommendations, planning and development committee, September twenty-second. Sixteen point one, referred matters list, and nineteen point one, closed session minutes from city council, September tenth, twenty-twenty-five.
And one more thing, um, I understand you have a motion for Nigeria Independence Day. We could add to the,
We can add to the agenda?
Yes. Okay, so motion moved by councillor, uh, Power, second by councillor Mederos, uh, to approve the consent motion. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We have several proclamations, um, today, and members of council will join me in reading the proclamations, um, that they are passionate about. Um, and if there are members here, um, to respond to the proclamation from this specific organization, please let us know so we can give you an opportunity to speak to your proclamation. At the end of the proclamations, we'll do, um, photos with council. The first proclamation is British Home Children's Day, and councillor Keenan requested to, uh, speak to this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas from nineteen, or eighteen sixty-nine to nineteen forty-eight, more than a hundred thousand children of all ages emerge from the, from parts of the United Kingdom to Canada to work as indentured farm laborers and domestic help under the British child migration schemes. Although many of these children were believed to be orphans, only two percent truly were, and have then since become known collectively as the British Home Children. It's estimated that over four million Canadians today are descendants of the British Home Children, whose stories are part of the fabric of our national history. Many of these children, after enduring hardship, grew up to settle in Canada, serve our country in times of war, and contribute significantly to the growth and development of our communities. The contributions, resilience, and sacrifices of the Brit, of the British Home Children and their descendants should be recognized, honored, and never forgotten. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of the City Brampton Council, do hereby proclaim September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, as British Home Children's Day in the City of Brampton.
Team members from the British Home Children's Day? So, oh, we do, okay, yes, okay.
I wasn't getting that, but I don't think anybody else is here for this, so.
Well, thank you, Laurie.
Thank you councillor for that. My name is Laurie Robinson, and I'm one of those descendants. Um, my grandpa Charlie was put on a ship when he was eight years old. And, uh, he was not an orphan. Um, this was part of a scheme to clean up England and get the paupers off the streets. He was lucky that he was sent to a farm with a, a nice family. But the fact is, there were children that died right here in Ontario. They were not treated well. They were not fed. They died in accidents. They drowned. And while this is gaining recognition, and apologies have been given by Australia and the UK, Canada has not apologized for the treatment of these children. And that's why I'm here today, to make sure that this story is out there and we keep hearing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Laurie. Um, our next two proclamations will be read by councillor Santos, and that is for National Day of Truth and Reconciliation and Orange Shirt Day.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. Whereas the City of Brampton recognizes National Day for Truth and Reconciliation as a time to acknowledge the children who lost their lives in Canadian residential schools and to honor the survivors, families, communities, and nations. There were one hundred and forty federal-run residential schools which operated in Canada between eighteen thirty-one and nineteen ninety-eight. Survivors of these institutions advocated for recognition and compensation and demanded accountability for the residual impacts and harm caused to children that attended a residential school and their families. In December twenty fifteen, the Truth and Reconciliation Commission released its final report, followed by ninety-four calls to action. The National Day for Truth and Reconciliation is a direct response to call to action number eighty, which called Federal Statutory Day of Commemoration. The City of Brampton will observe and commemorate this day through events and activities that spread greater awareness about the tragedies resulting from the residential school system and the ongoing impacts of its illegacy. The City of Brampton remembers, reflects, and reaffirms our commitment to learning the truth about the history of residential schools and joining Indigenous peoples on a path towards reconciliation. The city is committed to working with local First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples as we work towards responding to the TRC's calls to action. Therefore, I, on behalf of Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, as National Day for Truth and Reconciliation in the City of Brampton.
Thank you, councillor Santos. And do we have a representative from, uh, the National Day for Truth Reconciliation here that would like to speak to it? Okay, well, maybe what we'll do is we'll read out the orange shirt, and then the representative can speak to, um, our Orange Shirt Day.
So on Orange Shirt Day, and I believe members of council have pins, thank you very much for the Every Child Matters pins as well. Orange Shirt Day, whereas the City of Brampton acknowledges Orange Shirt Day, an Indigenous-led grassroots commemorative day that honors the children who survived attending Canadian residential schools and those who did not. This day reminds us that all children are sacred, and the city shares in recognizing that every child matters. The City of Brampton acknowledges the intergenerational trauma caused by the residential school system, the systemic disconnection of Indigenous children from their families, communities, cultures, and the land has resulted in lasting physical, mental, emotional, and spiritual harm and loss of life that continues today. The City of Brampton affirms that every child matters. And that Orange Shirt Day symbolizes a collective effort to educate ourselves and all Bramptonians about the ongoing legacy of the residential school system on Indigenous peoples resulting from racism, violence, and colonization. The City of Brampton commissioned an on, original piece of art by Todd Jamison, an Oneida artist, educator, and Brampton resident for over thirty years. By displaying his art, every year, we recognize his understanding and connection to Indigenous culture and extend our gratitude for sharing his knowledge and experiences with the city in a very special way. On September thirtieth, City of Brampton residents and staff are encouraged to wear orange to raise awareness about residential schools, and today, we honor and remember the children who never returned home, the children who survived, and all the families impacted as we continue our work together on the path towards reconciliation. Therefore, on behalf of Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, we do hereby proclaim September thirtieth as Orange Shirt Day in the City of Brampton.
Thank you councillor Santos. And we have a representative here for Orange Shirt Day.
I just, on behalf of my dad, Todd Jamison, who put a lot of time and effort into, um, starting and working with the, uh, Truth and Reconciliation, I just want to give a thank you to City of Brampton and everyone else involved. He lived here for over thirty years and put his heart and soul into teaching the youth and old people alike, and, um, just, we hope that this continues as strong and if not stronger as, as the years go on, and that it's not forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And maybe to, um, uh, our CEO, um, or corporate services, for staff that want to purchase orange shirts leading up to September thirtieth. I know previously we've had an opportunities to, um, all display our orange shirts on September thirtieth. Where can we do that? And maybe when we post a photo for Orange Shirt Day, we can, um, circulate where residents of the city can purchase their orange shirt too. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, for the question. So staff as well as resident will be able to purchase our orange shirt at Garden Square on tomorrow, which is, um, September twenty-fifth. They're also able to purchase it, um, at Service Brampton.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, our next, um, motion is for dwarfism awareness month. And I believe councillor, uh, Power has that. No, oh, sorry. Deputy mayor saying?
Thank you, Mayor Brown.
Uh, dwarfism is a medical or genetic condition that
Uh, dwarfism is a medical or genetic condition that results in the person's short stature and affects approximately. One in every twenty-five thousand people worldwide. Whereas individuals with dwarfism are valuable contributing members of our communities. Who deserve full access, inclusion, and dignity in all areas of society, including education, employment, public space, and healthcare. Whereas Ontario Dwarfism Association, TODA, is a volunteer-run nonprofit organization. Dedicated to promoting awareness, acceptance, and advocacy for individuals living with dwar- dwarfism. And their families and host year-round events that foster connection, empowerment, and support. Whereas during the month of October. A dwarfism awareness month is recognized to educate the public, dispel myths and stereotypes. And celebrate the achievements and resilience of people with dwarfism. Whereas the color green is worn throughout October to symbolize hope, growth, and awareness for the dwarfism community. And various accessible and inclusive events and activities take place to build understanding and foster unity. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council. Do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty five as dwarfism awareness month in the city of Brampton.
And do we have a representative from dwarfism awareness month? Seeing none, we'll make sure they get a copy of the proclamation. Um, our next proclamation is for Green Sports Day. Um, Counselor Vasante, um, will be speaking to that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Green Sports Day, whereas the sports sector has long served as a platform to foster public health, stimulate the local economy, and drive positive social change. The sector holds significant potential to advance environmental sustainability. And support climate action goals by reducing greenhouse gas emissions, cutting waste, and promoting eco-conscious practices. Each year, thousands of tons of used sports equipment and athletic apparel are discarded in landfills across Canada despite the availability. Of second-hand sports stores, community gear swaps, and repair services that offer cost-effective. And environmentally friendly alternatives. Green Sports Day is recognized across Canada as a time to highlight and celebrate climate leadership in sport. Raise awareness of sustainable practices and encourage ongoing efforts toward a low emission, zero-waste future. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim October sixth, twenty twenty five. As Green Sports Day in the city of Brampton.
Thank you, Counselor Vasante. Is there anyone here from Green Sports Day? Seeing none, we'll make sure they get a copy of that proclamation. Our next proclamation, um, is Small Business Month, and our Chair of Economic Development has been doing a great job. Um, getting ready for, um, this recognition over to Counselor Tor.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Whereas Small Business Month is an annual occasion that recognizes and celebrates the vital contributions. Entrepreneurs and small business owners make to Brampton's economy, community, and overall prosperity. The city of Brampton is a leader in Ontario in fostering the growth and success of local small businesses through the Brampton Entrepreneur Center. With nearly ninety percent of Brampton's businesses classified as small. The city remains committed to creating an environment where entrepreneurs can start, grow, and thrive. Brampton is proud to support small business owners by equipping them with the tools and resources they need to succeed. Throughout Small Business Month, the Brampton Entrepreneur Center will host a full month of free programming, workshops, and events. Designed to inspire, educate, and empower entrepreneurs. Throughout the month of October, we come together to celebrate the resilience and achievements of Brampton's small businesses. These entrepreneurs not only drive our local economy and create jobs, but also shape the cultural fabric of our city. Their ideas, passion, and hard work fuel innovation, strengthen community pride, and contribute to the diversity that makes Brampton unique. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty five as Small Business Month. In the city of Brampton.
Thank you, Counselor Tor. Our next, oh, we have someone to speak to. This is back. Okay, great. And tell us about the city plans for Small Business, um, month. I mentioned to city councillors in previous Small Business Months, we've highlighted. Sort of our favorite, um, unsung small business in our words. A great opportunity to do so again to highlight, uh, businesses the city may not know about.
Of course. Thank you so much, Mayor Brown and members of council. I'm actually joined by the entire team of the Entrepreneur Center. I know they'll be down for a photo. Um, small businesses are the heart of our community. They fuel the local economy, they create jobs, and they introduce fresh ideas. There are over a hundred and ten thousand businesses in Brampton, and ninety percent of them are small businesses. That really is an incredible number, and I think it speaks to the strength of the entrepreneurial spirit in our city. These businesses do more than offer goods and services. They create opportunities, they connect people, and they help define what makes Brampton unique. This month, the city, along with many of our amazing partners, are offering a wide range of resources and supports for small businesses. From free workshops, online training, and networking opportunities, we're really helping to. Make sure that Brampton businesses have the skills needed to be successful. Um, we have programs for every stage of business. Um, we're running startup training at Gore Meadows Library. We're running marketing bootcamps, funding programs, all designed to help strengthen and expand existing businesses. And next Thursday, we'll be kicking off the month with the My Canadian Startup Event, delivered in partnership with Futurepreneur and TD Bank. While we're all proud to, um, offer these amazing supports to businesses. Small Business Month is also a reminder for all of us to support local. Um, by visiting our neighborhood shops, dining at our restaurants, and choosing Brampton's small businesses wherever you can. Uh, to learn more about all the exciting programs and events we have planned, you can visit our website. Um, you can follow us on social media. Um, or visit our, uh, dedicated page for Small Business Month at brampton.ca/sbm. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And we'll do a photo after we finish the proclamations with your team. Uh, next proclamation, um, is for Wrongful Conviction Day, which is October second. And Counselor Plessy will read out this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, wrongful conviction day. The loss of one's freedom due to a wrongful conviction has far-reaching and devastating consequences. Which not only affects the innocent individual's life, but also affects the quality of life of their families. And has a harmful effect on society as a whole. Wrongful conviction day is a global movement dedicated to advocating for innocent individuals. Who have been wrongfully convicted of a crime they did not commit. This day recognizes those persons who have been forced to endure the tremendous consequences brought by a wrongful criminal conviction. Wrongful conviction day has spearheaded, was spearheaded by the International Wrongful Conviction Day Committee. And now many organizations are leading events in its honor. The committee is committed to raising awareness of, of and advocacy against wrongful convictions globally. Wrongful convictions questions the integrity and fairness of the criminal justice system. And unless corrected, undermine society's trust in their criminal justice system. The implementation and recognition of the, this day is the start to reaching a broader audience regarding the importance surrounding miscarriages. Of justice. Therefore, on behalf of Mayor Patrick Brown. Brampton City Council proclaims October second, twenty twenty five, as wrongful conviction day in the city of Brampton.
Thank you, Counselor Plessy. And I recall, this is a proclamation we have every year. Um, and we had a local resident, I forget the name, that runs this association for Canada. And I believe it was in honor of Ruben Carter, that who was wrongly convicted, and there was a movie about him, so. Um, it's good that we, um, highlight, um, this association that has drawn, drawn national attention. Uh, from a passionate local resident. Um, I don't believe they're here, um, but we'll make sure they get a copy of this proclamation. Um, dyslexia awareness month is October eighth, twenty twenty five, and Counselor Mederos has the proclamation.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Brown. Um, International Dyslexia Awareness Day. Dyslexia is a learning difference. Uh, learning difference that affects approximately ten to twenty percent of Canadians impacting their ability to read, write, and spell. October is internationally recognized as Dyslexia Awareness Month. A time to raise public awareness, understanding, and support for individuals living with dyslexia. Dyslexia Canada has led the National Mark, uh, Market, uh, Read for Dyslexia Campaign for the past eight years. Encouraging Canadians to raise awareness and promote early identification and support for individuals with dyslexia. Throughout October, Canadians across the country participate in a range of activities to support the cause, including the classroom events. Community gatherings, flag raisings, and local, uh, initiatives that foster greater inclusion and understanding. Therefore, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim October, uh, October eighth, twenty twenty five. As International Dyslexia Awareness Day in the city of Brampton.
Thank you, Counselor Mederos. And our last proclamation is for Islamic History Month, and Counselor Power. Um, asked for the privilege of reading out that proclamation.
Thank, thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, October marks Islamic History Month. The city of Brampton recognizes October as Islamic History Month. A time to acknowledge, reflect, and educate our community about the rich cultures, histories, and contribution of Muslim residents. With over fifty thousand Muslims calling Brampton home, this month is an opportunity to share and celebrate the heritage. And contribution of Muslims locally and globally, fostering greater inclusion and understanding in our city. Brampton is home to over twenty-five masjids, uh, and musallas. Sorry, I can't see. Uh, Masjid Open Houses will take place throughout the month, inviting the public to learn more about Muslim faith, culture, and traditions. The city of Brampton will commemorate this month through the, a series of events and activities that celebrate arts, culture, and community. We extend the gratitude to many imams, leaders, youth, and staff. Who helped bring the Brampton twenty forty vision to life. By raising awareness, celebrating diversity, uplifting Muslim voices, we build a Brampton rooted in compassion, unity, and respect. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of the City of Brampton Council, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty five. As Islamic History Month in the city of Brampton.
Um, and I believe we have Malana Omar, um, here to respond to, uh, that proclamation. And other members of the community.
Well, thank you, Ma- Mayor Patrick Brown and council. Uh, we really appreciate your partnership, your brotherhood and sisterhood, uh, with the community. Uh, we all know that the Muslim community has been facing a lot of struggles as of late, as we all do in our own way. But your partnership and your help and assistance has really, really, uh, made things easier for us. And since that, uh, there is going to be Islamic History Month next month, we do look forward to entertaining each and every single one of you. And everyone present here in our masjids, in our musallas, so we can have a greater understanding of each other. And share our values and share our traditions with you. So thank you so much for this.
Thank you, and we look forward to being, uh, last year was a huge turnout, looking forward to a big turnout again today. I love how. The masjid for our city, uh, had open houses too to learn. Um, I think the more we learn about each other's faiths, the more we have a city that, um, is loving and harmonious and. Pushes back against the hate and misinformation we see when we learn about each other. So, well done, and congratulations on a great, um, history month, uh, last year. Um, I'm told that we have the representative from Dyslexia Canada who's here. Sorry we missed you. And, uh, we'd be honored to have you respond to the proclamation.
Hello, uh, Mayor Patrick Brown and council. Um, my name is Leah. I'm the mother to a brilliant, uh, boy, James. Who has dyslexia, and I'm just here continuing the work of decoding dyslexia and Dyslexia Canada to advocacy groups. That parents like me and experts turn to for information. And being that in twenty twenty-two, the Ontario Human Rights Commission produced an inquiry on the right to read. And providing a hundred and fifty-seven recommendations for change to happen. Um, I'm here just continuing that work because literacy is a fundamental right, fundamental right for every child. And in any nation across the world. It increases our social capital, our socioeconomic success, along with our, um, confidence and. Uh, physical and mental well-being. So, I'm here to just continue the work of those two groups, and I would like to thank you for the proclamation.
Um, thank you. There may be a, a question from Deputy Mayor Singh.
I just wanted to thank you, um, for highlighting this. Um, it's personal to me as well. Uh, so, um, I understand some of the challenges, but, um, thank you. Uh, I've been becoming more aware, um, of the dyslexia and, and how it impacts and, and how to move forward. I've loved ones affected by it, so, um, thank you for, uh, your proclamation and your announcement. Thank you.
Um, and Counselor Keenan.
Sorry. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just to the last delegation. Um, I really appreciate you coming out. Um, and bringing your son. As somebody who personally suffers with this, um, I, I applaud you for what you, what you're doing and. I really see that there's a lot more today than there was for me when I was growing up. Um, so I applaud that and, you know, even though you have it, it's, it's a gift. It's not a disability. It's an absolute gift. Um, so I just, uh, to the young man sitting there, I, I, I know you'll do big things, um, and thank you for coming in today.
Okay, I'm gonna ask council to join me out front as we take photos with, uh, proclamations. Seven-two, right? Sure. Members of council. We're back in session. If you could please take your seat. We have a request from Councilor Pulashy to vary the order. Councilor Pulashy, if you want to speak to that?
Sure. Given the latest interest, some of the questions and unanswered questions, I'm asking to move Carolyn's presentation from the beginning of the agenda towards the end of the agenda before we go in camera. So, item seven, seven-two be moved to before we go in camera.
I have no objection to that. Any objections? Clerk, procedurally, do you need to reopen the agenda to vary the agenda? Okay, okay. I see unanimous consent for that. Thank you, Councilor Pulashy. Our next item is seven point one delegation from Sophia Ali and Sana Sean, Muslim Media Hub re-Youth Pocket Film Program.
It's time to reclaim our story to be seen and heard on our own terms. Muslim Media Hub is making that happen. We're training future filmmakers. We're showcasing real stories and contributions. We're bringing people together to shape the future of Muslim media.
Ever since everything that's happened in October seventh, I realized how powerful the media is and taking hold on that narrative. And I knew that, you know, with my storytelling, I do have that responsibility to share a message to the world.
I can tell you how important the work of Muslim Media Hub is. It is truly a space where young people, young Muslims, can come to initiate media projects that is not only going to be relevant, but also for the people around us.
This is what I felt safe because you don't have to sugarcoat your story. Those people whose voice is not heard by officials would be heard through Muslim media, and this is important.
What we create now will define how Muslims are seen, heard, and understood for generations. Support Muslim Media Hub. Together, we can shape the future of Muslim media and show the world the transformative power of our faith.
Good morning, respected mayor and councillors. My name is Sophia Ali. I'm the founder and executive director of Muslim Media Hub. Muslim Media Hub exists due to the frustration that Muslims felt with the way they were depicted in mainstream media, in television shows, in movies. We felt that we were often invisible, or when we were featured, we were featured in a way where we were misrepresented. And the message to us, and the message to particularly young people who are watching themselves on the screens, is that they don't necessarily belong. Our mission at Muslim Media Hub is to change that by providing the tools and skills that are necessary for Muslims to tell their own stories and to claim a place in Canadian culture and history. That's what the Youth Pocket Films program is about, which you can see on the screen right there. With the city of Brampton's support, we are showing high school students how to create a film of their own from beginning to end, using the one thing they always have in their hand, their phones. The results are powerful. Students start out with unsure about what they have to offer or if they have anything worth saying. But by the end, they're standing in front of their peers, screening a film they've created for themselves. They leave not just with the technical skills, but also with a sense of pride in who they are and a sense that their voice matters. Tying this program to Islamic History Month makes it even more meaningful. It tells youth, you are an important part of the Canadian story. And at a time when prejudice and Islamophobia still exists, it gives them a positive, proactive way to express themselves creatively. That's the role of Muslim Media Hub. It's actually the first of its kind in Canada. It's a launchpad for the next generation of Canadian Muslim storytellers. I want to thank the city of Brampton for their support, for making Islamic History Month real, and for cultivating a city where every young person feels seen, valued, and celebrated. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see. Oh, councilor.
Thank you through you, Mayor Brown. When I found out about the work that Muslim Media Hub does, once I think Muslim sent us the youth program here, it fills my heart with joy. You're addressing a need that has been there in the community for a very long time. Us from the city community have similar, have had similar challenges here in Canada when somebody else tells your story. You don't get to frame it yourself. That voice is always missing, whether it's on mainstream media, whether it's on social media commentary. And like you said, rightfully so, the rise in hate online these days, whether it is Islamophobia, whether it is against any other community. The onus is on us, and I think this is amazing that you're preparing the youth for that because they're going to be the voice of the future. Previous generations or parents' generations didn't have the same luxury. English wasn't the first language. They couldn't be their own voice. They couldn't, they always had to rely on somebody else to tell their story. So, it's really good to see the work that this media hub is taking here in the city of Brampton. I would love to see how we can participate in this, promote it even further. I know we have been sharing on social media, but love, but would love to get the word out during Islamic History Month for more youth to participate in a program like this, to find their own voice, but also carry the responsibility of being the voice for their community. So, thank you for bringing this to the city of Brampton.
Thank you, and we'd love to work with the city community as well, to highlight their voices as well.
We have a motion moved from Councilor Tor, seconded by Councilor Power, to receive the presentation. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to our next item, which I believe is eight point one, because we deferred seven point two to the end of the agenda, which is Government Relations Matter, and Councilor Santos held this item. Councilor Santos.
Good morning, Mayor Brown and members of council. Can jump to the next slide, please. I'll begin with regional update for this week. Regional council is meeting this Thursday at nine thirty AM, and we have identified several, we have identified several items for you today. We can move to the next slide, please. Item eight point two is Trans Help Service Delivery Review. The report includes a study by an intermunicipal working group led by consulting firm Left Right, or Left Turn, Right Turn, indicating a strong support for, from passengers and stakeholders for the current service delivery model, including benefit of seamless cross-boundary travel. The report also identified the current regional model offers operational and financial efficiencies. Furthermore, the report includes a recommendation that the region continues delivering trans-help services with several recommendations to improve service delivery. City staff support report recommendation. We can move to the next item, please. Next, we wanted to flag for you item eight point three, implementation of transferring Pio Arts Gallery, Museum, and Archives to local municipalities as directed by council. On April tenth, twenty twenty-five, regional council directed staff to explore the implementing implications of transferring PMA to local municipalities. Intermunicipal working group and financial subgroup were established with representatives from all four municipalities. The report provides three scenarios for PMA transition and identifies potential risks and implications. City staff have participated in a working group, and there is an agreement among lower-tier municipalities that risks highlighted in the report can be mitigated should regional council decide to transition PMA to the city of Brampton. Additionally, item twenty point one is a motion regarding Pio Art Gallery, Museums, and Archives, calling for transfer of PMA to, from regional, region of Pio to city of Brampton pending ratification on Q one, twenty twenty-six. Next slide, please. Next item is the item thirteen point two Affordable Transit Program. It is a regional program that supports and provides additional, helps residents experiencing poverty, accessing employment, training, food, and other essential services. Report recommends enhancements in access to the service as well as improvements in program delivery. An additional recommendation includes expanding, introducing a fifty percent discount on single fares and expanding the program to include Caladan residents traveling on existing Brampton Transit buses, that extent to Caladan. Anticipated cost savings from efficiencies could allow region to potentially support additional six hundred to one thousand clients over time. City staff have been engaged with Affordable Transit Program team on proposed updates and support the recommendation. Brampton Transit team will work closely with the region of Pio, city of Mississauga, and town of Caladan to implement new program improvements should regional council approve it. Brampton Transit will bring report back to city council to update the user fee by law. Next slide, please. The last regional agenda item we wanted to flag for you this week is item seventeen point four, a report that provides an update on the status of the region's development charges, deferral, and grant program. The city of Brampton accounts for one thousand five hundred and seventeen of five thousand three hundred and sixty-seven residential units included in application to date, which includes sixty-nine units that have reached building permit stage and thirty-six of which are located in Brampton. It is important to observe that to date, there has been no formal provincial announcement of any assistance to maintain the program. If regional council continues the program in its current form without provincial support, the shortfall would have to be funded through non-DC sources. The program will be up for review by regional council on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, should no provincial funding be announced. We can move to the next slide, please. As it happens, we haven't identified any provincial announcement for you for this week. So, move straight to federal announcement, and we'll start with launch of federal public consultation on the Canada-United States-Mexico trade agreement. This is the second round of public consultations, first one having taken place in twenty twenty-four. The consultation is open to the public, and the input will be, will inform federal preparations for the review of the agreement. Public comments are welcome until November third, twenty twenty-five, and city staff are reviewing the public consultation documents for potential submission. We can move to the next slide, please. Another federal update has, is related to the Minister of Justice having announced a combating hate act. It is a legislative change that will change the criminal code codifying a definition of hatred and classify it as hatred, conduct of hatred as a crime. Additional changes will make, will make it a crime to intimidate or obstruct people from accessing places of worship, schools, or community centers, among others. It will also make hate a motivated crime, a specific offense. City staff will follow the legislative process and provide updates as the legislation makes its way through parliament. Next slide, please. Also, lastly, the prime minister has announced changes to the federal cabinet. That's, that has been a result of Chrystia Freeland, the Minister of Transportation, leaving the cabinet, and she will be taking a new position as Canada's new special representative for reconstruction of Ukraine. Minister LeBlanc is taking up responsibilities as Minister of Internal Trade, and Minister Stephen McKinnon will take his responsibilities as Minister of Transportation. Staff remain engaged with federal government as we lead to the upcoming federal budget. Can move to the next slide. And speaking of budget, the federal finance minister has formally announced that the budget will be tabled on November fourth. The budget has been announced as, as, as expected to include parameters such as generational investments in housing and infrastructure, catalyzing private investment and strengthening Canada's relationship with reliable trading partners and allies, as well as identifying new fiscal discipline in government's day-to-day operations with focus on resources, focusing resources on long-term growth. As in previous years, government relations staff will follow the budget presentation and provide updates to council. Can move to the next slide. Our last two slides have to do with updates related to association of municipalities of Ontario. First is the fact that AMO will be hosting a trade and tariffs forum next month on October twenty-fourth in Toronto. Members of AMO, AMO members will be joined by key stakeholders and partners to, to provide a reliable assessment on tariffs and trade disruptions and their impacts on municipal sector. Topics that will be discussed will include municipal tools to deliver local economic developments and municipal role in advancing provincial and federal approaches to economic development. City staff will participate in event and report back as required. And we can move to our last slide, which provides the latest advocacy update from AMO on two important topics, one being automated speed enforcement, and AMO's letter to Minister of Transportation, which AMO stressed the evidence-based road safety improvements through the program as well as cost efficiencies and broad public support. Additionally, AMO engaged with the federal government on the role of DCs in municipal finances, stressing the fact that any federally mandated DC reductions would have to include offset of municipal costs. And this concludes this presentation.
Thank you, and I'm going to pass it on to Councilor Santos. I have to jump in. I'm meeting Mayor Brown, he's going to be here, but I support her direction. I just want to state it for the record as well.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor and Deputy Mayor. So, my comments are about the, some of the back and forth related to the ASE. Has, has anything been legislated officially yet at this point in time? Or is it just been announcements mostly?
Through the mayor, councilor, so far, what we've heard is, is, is any remarks made by the premier publicly or reports through media?
Okay, so, based on some of those public announcements, even though nothing's in writing yet per se, or nothing official yet, are there any upcoming meetings related to AMO or big city mayors where they could take the next step and strategize, particularly for municipalities like Brampton, Toronto, Ottawa, many others, who support and have evidence to support the effectiveness of this program?
Through the mayor council, there is an upcoming meeting of the Ontario big city mayors in Thunder Bay in October, as well as ongoing engagement between staff level with the provincial government that is going, happening as we speak on an ongoing basis.
Thanks, Andrea, and sorry through the mayor to you, Councilor Santos. The Ontario big city mayors, through the leadership of Mayor Brown, actually is hosting a working group specifically to deal with proposed changes to the ASE program on. proposed changes to the ASE program on next week. So we do have a meeting. I would note that almost every Ontario big city mayor or big city member have ASE programs with the exception of a couple, and there seems to be great interest in a working group that's being formed to discuss potential changes.
So I'm just wondering if we in Brampton, since we have taken a leadership role when it comes to the ASE program and have the evidence and review that it is working consistent with the evidence of Sick Kids Hospital, TMU, CAA, police, et cetera. I'm wondering if it's possible for us to add to the agenda a request for some sort of communication advocacy campaign. I was on News Talk ten ten again this morning talking about this, and one of my biggest frustrations is that our decisions as municipalities when it comes to dealing with speeding are evidence based. And like I said this morning, the fines, when they talk about a cash grab, the fines are actually established by the province, not the municipalities. And there are tremendous amount of opportunities. If we don't want to charge fines and there's this perception that it's a cash grab, I think there was a police officer who suggested, okay, don't take away the fine and give the ticket to the insurance company so that they can see who is speeding in the community. And with Brampton, we hear all the time about speeding, reckless driving, unsafe driving, our auto insurance rates, the accidents. And here we are, making an evidence based decision about speed cameras with a tool that was granted by the province. We invested in the tool significantly. It demonstrated that it's working to change behavior like other municipalities such as Ottawa, because my colleague from FCM in Ottawa also texted me. And now they're taking it away, but we've already spent the money. So my suggestion and perhaps this is direction is at the next meeting, when this topic comes up, that perhaps if the province is indeed going to remove this tool as an option for municipalities despite the evidence, that we should ring up a total of how much we've spent on the program with all the municipalities that spent money on the program, and perhaps share that total cost to the province and request that they give us our money back. Because obviously, if we knew that the province was going to take the tool away, we would not have made the investment. So that's my suggestion, that's my my direction when the meeting shows up. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions councillor Tor?
Thank you through you Mayor Brown, just following up on what councillor Santos is saying about the ASE program. It's kind of funny and a sad way to see it in the news when the premier called it a municipal cash grab program. Chris, could you just like, like I know it's a rhetorical question, but who introduced the policy to bring ASE programs in, like who brought the legislation forward? It would have been the Ministry of Transportation, right?
Yes. Thank you councillor Tor through the mayor again. So the ASE program was brought into brought forward actually under the previous provincial government under the leadership of Minister Stephen Del Duke at the time in two thousand seventeen. The actual regulations that were implemented that brought us to where we're at today were implemented by the current government in twenty nineteen.
Yeah, so that's what I find ironic about this, when the mayor of Vaughan was the Minister of Transportation, was the one that brought the policy forward, got the work started on this, he's the first one to back out of this. And when the Ford government came in, when Carolyn Mulrooney was the Minister of Transportation, was the one that actually brought the legislation into effect, giving us the powers, giving all municipalities powers to implement this program. I think when in the future, if there is any public advocacy or whenever this gets talked about again at AMO through the Ontario big city mayors, I think it's very important to highlight that this is a provincial program. This is not a municipal cash grab program. Again, like to the point that councillor Santos said, the cash that we are supposed to grab is prescribed by the province. What those set fines are, everything is within provincial regulations and rightfully so, they have the power to take this away as well. But I think that's important to highlight that as part of the narrative. Because I think our residents are being misled when they see in the news that, you know, the mayor or the city of Brampton and other cities chose to do this program and now, you know, Ford is coming out helping the common man and trying to take the program away that they brought into place. I think people really need to know that. So I hope that we can include that as part of the discussions in the future.
Through the mayor to councillor Tor again, I can tell you the working group meeting that's actually set for OBCM next week, the agenda is being finalized, but every mitigation measure, potential proposed changes that could be made to alleviate some of the concerns that the province has raised with the program are open for discussion and ideally from that, if there's consensus amongst the big city mayors, there'd be a motion that that provides some path forward of advocacy that would address all the issues that have been raised.
Okay, and again, also talking about the province, if by October seventeenth we don't hear back about the funding for the DC program at the region of Peel, it's getting reviewed again at the region. It's different from how we're doing in other city, we're not waiting for that. But has there been, in your knowledge, at least from our city of Brampton perspective, has there been any positive conversations with the province? On like, are we going to get a check before October seventeenth?
Through the mayor to councillor Tor specifically on that agenda item for the region appeal, I can say that the GR department at the city has not been consulted on that. I would note that in the report that I believe is going to regional council tomorrow, it says that regional staff have been meeting with the province and so you should be able to get that update through them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay councillor Madiros.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I guess just to piggyback on some of the stuff, and I do fully support the motion moved regarding financials, I think the councillor is spot on. And certainly, I was on Y Media myself a couple of days ago and I did receive directly in a live show that the Minister of Transportation sent a text basically saying it was a cash grab and so on. And, you know, my defense of ASE, I think all of us unanimously, you know, especially when I guess councillor Santos today on the radio would have reiterated, we're looking for solutions for speeding. And I don't care what the solution is, if they have a better solution. And I find it troubling when a premier will go publicly state that, you know, he was a councillor for four years and he can bring, you know, cars to a halt. It almost undermines and makes us feel that, you know, if they have some, if they have some secrets that we don't know, or, you know, it makes us feel like we're incompetent, we're doing that. So that aside, what I was hoping as part of the discussions regarding the ASE and what we do with it is the type of supports they can provide us when it comes to the reduction of speeding. So almost like, you know, give us some other tools then, that it's not just simply saying that we remove that. If there's some other tools that they can provide us to help dealing with the speeding. Because essentially, you know, in the Ministry of Transportation, I have a lot of respect for, he does great things for Brampton. We share the same areas with councillor Keenan and myself, so we're serving the same residents. And, you know, every parent out there who wants to protect little Johnny from street racing or from people speeding in front of schools, you know, we share that concern. So we've tried, just as a reminder to folks, and everyone knows, you know, I can speak specifically in the Peel Village area. We've tried darting curbs, we've tried, you know, like we've tried a lot of different tools. So, you know, I hope the, I guess, AMO when working with the province is that they probably give us some guidelines and criteria, and if there's could be some envelope, some funding to help us deal with the loss that if we might deal with ASE.
Through the mayor to councillor Madiros, one thing I would note, as Andre rightfully mentioned, there hasn't been any legislation changes at this point. There has been some reports in the past couple of days that the province is indicating that if they do change the program, they will bring forward a funding envelope to look at other mechanisms to deal with speed reduction. But we haven't seen any details on sort of the size of that, the scope of that, what tools that may include. So they've indicated there may be something coming, but we have no details on that at this point.
Yeah, and thank you on that. So, you know, I think a lot's been said on that file. And just through you, Mr. Mayor, lastly, just regarding, I know federal budget is going to be tabled soon. And, you know, it seems at the region, we discussed the whole HST, because there was a lot of talks, it was, I think, a commitment or a campaign promise about we're taking it off to support affordable housing. And now the discussion seems to change. Do we know any thoughts that they're having? Have we been consulted about what they want to do for the sector? Because there was a lot of expectation from the industry and people on hold expecting some type of federal announcement that would incentivize or support developers and builders.
Through the mayor again, councillor Madiros, we have not been given any indication specifically around any HST remission from new builds or purpose built properties. We do understand it was in the previous, or the Liberal Party's platform, campaign platform, that they would look to change DCs and potentially reduce HST on new builds. And they had allocated a pot of, I believe it was about six billion dollars over a number of years, which wouldn't be adequate enough to cover the amounts that they'd be looking to make up. So that we haven't been given any indication. If that's going to be moving forward, I would note that they announced their Build Canada Homes program in the last two weeks, which is a thirteen billion dollar investment in a purpose built rental, but with primarily focused around a new entity that the federal government's introducing, but that had nothing to do with the HST reform.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Madiros, over to councillor Pulashy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor, just to, Chris, when, I guess it's important that, and I think all members of council certainly know, and maybe it was already said, that, you know, for every one person that complains about, you know, getting a ticket or any kind of speeding when they get caught, I continue to have five that, you know, want the program, ask for it and continue to to request. Not even specifically in in school zones, but in proximity to school zones. And I think that's the big thing, you know, when we were having the conversation yesterday, councillor Santos and I, we were talking about, you know, the proximity to school zones and what classifies school zones. And you have, you know, when you, when we first, when the province or the feds initially legalized marijuana and allowed the pot shops, they determined that the pot shops weren't allowed in this amount of distance to to schools. So then to me, you know, I think that that tells me that the province says, you know, the distance is this and maybe our school zones should be that same proximity. Obviously, there's the one saying that, you know, kids from that school travel X amount of meters to wherever. So I think that's something that we can continue to to talk about and advocate for. Also with the unfortunate advocating that advocating for lawbreakers that the premier is currently doing, and the money, I guess, that he's, you know, he has said that he's willing to provide municipalities in terms of, you know, traffic calming, I think that's something that we continue with the discussion to say how much money and, you know, we won't be removing any cameras until that money flows in and we can put the proper traffic calming measures in into place. We know that traffic calming measures work for the first six months, and then people get back into the habit of feeling comfortable in the route that they choose. And those routes are usually, you know, you're cut through areas in school zones. And people get comfortable driving and then the speed starts to to increase. And that's what we've seen, and that's what we saw in the past prior to even the ASE cameras. Back in two thousand fourteen fifteen at the region, there was a bunch of regional councillors that wanted to put cameras on school buses, the stop arm cameras. And then this spurred the conversation of the AMPS program and ASE cameras in school zones, which, you know, was this government, like councillor Madiros was referring to or councillor Tor was referring to. Like, you provided us with an opportunity, you know, to keep our children safe. And now you're taking it away. Like you took land out of the green belt and then you put it back. Like what truly is what we know works for the residents of Brampton? And I think that's, you know, one of the big questions. When, if we're talking about, you know, just hopefully at least keeping them within school zones, you know, I think that's something that we can all get together, other levels of government and us, and we can support and then hopefully move those other traffic calming measures to to those areas. What I want to know also though is the cameras that we have out there that are not in school zones. They're typically in our community safety zones that are close to parks where we know a lot of kids frequent. If those are being taken out, then what can be done with those cameras to repurpose them in other areas of the city of Brampton? I know that leaving them and collecting that data is still is still great because data, any data information is great for us when we want to make any decisions. But can we repurpose those cameras and put them anywhere else in the city? Can we put them in our underground garages? Can we put them, you know, in in other areas is one question, and I'll ask Kevin or Michael to answer that. But then also, how many schools in Brampton right now are covered with the ASE cameras? Is something else that that I think would be good to know? Because if, and then if we have those cameras that can be pulled out of or that are being forced out of those areas, can they go into the school zones and cover off of, cover off whatever schools that are currently that don't have the ASE camera? So Kevin, can we repurpose the cameras that were going to be that are going to be taken away from us? And have we covered off all schools in Brampton?
To the Chair to councillor Pulashy, do you mean to repurpose them for other, something else other than enforcement?
Repurpose them for anything else, so they're not a waste. Now, collecting data is not a waste, but are we going out, you know, in the future and putting cameras up at intersections that, you know, these could potentially be used when we're talking about, and I'll look at Peter, we're talking about signalizing our intersections in terms of AI, can this camera be used? Like, is there something else thinking outside the box that we can use so we don't have to go out and buy other cameras? Is kind of what my question was?
Through the Chair to councillor Pulashy, I believe the cameras do have other capabilities and data collection is probably the primary other function that they can do, for sure.
Good, good, okay. And then are all schools in Brampton currently covered?
Through the Chair, we have about seventy five percent of the schools with cameras and most of the other schools will have speed cushions or some other type of countermeasure.
Okay, so maybe then that's something that we can look at to whatever cameras are that are going to be. If they're leaving them in school zones, which I think is a really good decision by the province to do that, can we move those other cameras and put them into into the other twenty five percent school zones?
Yeah, through the Chair, that's, that would be great. The sort of restriction with the school zones is that the school zone is the school frontage and a hundred and fifty meters on each side of the school, which sort of limits the space that we have. And with the current cameras may not be possible in some areas, but it will be in some.
So then that goes back to my original comment about what determines a school zone? And if the province says, you know, a school zone is X, I think it's three hundred meters away from a pot shop, is what?
So through the Chair, the HTA and our school zone speed policy aligns that. So school zones can be the school frontage plus a hundred and fifty meters on each side of the school property line.
Okay.
That's what dictates what a school zone is, and that's on the roadway only where the school fronts.
Kevin, do you remember what the pot shop, the meters were, three hundred meters, two hundred meters? So then we should up that to two hundred meters around the around the school, right? If a road is leading to a school, that's a school, that should be a school zone, right? Like councillor Santos gave a great example of Linkdale, you know, not being a school road, but but you have to travel down Linkdale to get to, what was that other street? Kingswood, right? Kingswood is the forty, Linkdale's a fifty? When Linkdale should be a forty and should be a school zone because that's where kids are traveling, that's where, you know.
Through the Chair, we are correcting some of that now through the neighborhood speed limit initiative.
Yeah.
But that will take some time to get every neighborhood into that program. Um, but that will take some time to get every neighborhood into that program.
Yep, which is a great program also, thanks Kevin. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um, our next speaker is councillor Santos.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, for, uh, just very quickly for, for a second time, cause it was, uh, reminded. Uh, somebody reminded me that, again, speeding is the number one cause of car fatalities. Um, not just in Brampton, but everywhere else. And we are effectively with this program slowing cars down, we have the evidence to prove it. And if speeding, then with the cameras removed, just a question to staff, is it possible for us? If the province goes ahead with removing them? Can we check and maintain and monitor the before and after impact on speed? In those areas where the ca- where the cameras were and what the impact was after? And then my next question is on the advocacy side. In addition to totaling up the sunk cost of investment by all of these municipalities. Who thought the tool would exist for us to deal with it? Um, I'd like to look at, you know, the cost of hospitalization and healthcare costs. Because of deaths related to speeding, which again is the number one cause of car fatalities. Um, in Ontario in Canada. So that number might be difficult, we might need Osler's help on that one. But I think folks need to see this not as a cash grab. Because the, the biggest cash grab is actually the, the huge million, millions of dollars that municipalities have spent. To implement and deal with speeding in our communities, that's a huge cash grab. And, and how we're gonna pay for it, but also the impact and the consequence. Is health-related in our hospitals, in emergency rooms, where these situations could have been avoided. So if we, if we could look at that, and then Kevin and Michael, if you could comment on the before and after data, should the province proceed with this?
Uh, through Chair to councillor Santos, yes, we could collect the data after. In fact, we could use the cameras themselves to collect the data if the program is canceled.
Awesome, and then my final point of, uh, just for clarification, staff, do you need a motion on this? Or do you have enough direction? You're free to follow up with any of us to provide any other feedback and preparation for that meeting, if needed.
Through, through, uh, the deputy mayor to councillor Santos, and I think we can take that as direction. Um, staff are already preparing a lot of what was asked for today in terms of, uh, um, information that's already been sent to the province. Um, around safety data and, uh, um, and then, um, we can, uh, make those, uh, recommendations. At the upcoming OBCM working group meeting on ASEs.
Thank you, and then my final comment, especially to all my colleagues as well. Whenever I get an email and a complaint now with respect to speeding. I'm gonna forward it to the local MPPs. And I suggest everybody else do the same. Because clearly, we don't know what we're doing with traffic calming at the municipality, but the province does. So I'm happy for them to up, I'm happy to upload that prob- problem to the province.
All right, thank you, uh, councillor Tour.
Thank you through you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, Michael, maybe this is for you, uh, just quickly, when you get a ticket, right? Um, how much of that money actually goes to the province?
Um, yeah, through the Chair, councillor Tour, the, there are three components to the ticket. There's the fine amount, uh, for the actual speeding offense, uh, which the city, uh, uh, retains that amount. And there are two other components, there is a, a fee that the province charges us for accessing registered license plate owner information. For eight dollars and twenty-five cents per ticket. And then there's another component called a victim surcharge amount that, uh, the province collects as well. And those two provincial components, usually it's a, it's a variable amount depending on how fast people are driving. But those amounts are usually twenty, twenty to thirty percent of the ticket value.
But the, but the eight dollar amount, that's a fixed amount, right?
That is fixed.
Yeah, could you do some math later and come back to council? On how much of this cash grab was grabbed by Premier Ford and his government? Uh, in terms of all the tickets that were issued, how much of that money, if it's thirty to forty percent of it? If that's gone to the province, will the premier then, if he cancels, if he really follows through and doesn't flip-flop for the tenth time? Um, and actually goes through with this, will he, will the province then return us that money as well? Because then you can't keep that money and call it a cash grab, right? Um, but if you can do that math and please bring us like an actual concrete number to this date, to September twenty-fourth. From the start of the program till now, how much of this money would have gone to, has gone to the province? Uh, we need to know that exact amount.
We can pull that information together.
Thank you.
All right, um, thank you, I just want to thank staff. Uh, I know, um, you know, there was a lot of adjustments in the last week with a lot of announcements. I know you put in a lot of work on this, so thank you, um, and, uh, we'll move forward accordingly. Oh, I think councillor Plesch also wants to thank staff, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Acting Mayor, just want to piggyback off of what councillor Santos is, was saying. And I, I want to s- tell you, it, it, like, it's not gonna work. It's, we're gonna, we're gonna blame the MPs, MPPs and, and say to our residents that it's the province, but it's not gonna work. Just like the tow truck industry now, the tow truck industry right now is in complete turmoil. I'm watching more and more tow trucks running reds, leaving like, in and out of traffic. Now, police are doing, you know, a good part in that, but ta- taking away our ability to license tow trucks. Has caused this industry to actual, like, i- it's absolutely chaos right now. And the fact that when we license tow trucks, every accident, all the debris was cleaned up. Today, you'll go through intersections and you'll continue to see debris, there's more flat tires than there were before. Because they don't pick it up, because they don't have to, because we can't do anything about it. So just like that, we're, and then we said, well, we're gonna blame the province. Well, people don't care, when they get a flat tire, who are they calling? It's our road, right? So it won't work if we're actually going to be serious about, you know, putting somebody to blame, then, you know, unfortunately, the mayor's not here right now. But, you know, we should definitely have some bigger advocacy piece, almost as big as the fair share. Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Thank you, and, um, your points are well received, I've had similar feedback from the tow truck industry. Uh, I have a motion moved by councillor Santos and seconded by councillor Tour, uh, to receive the presentation, all in favor? Motion carries. I think, uh, next is ten point two point two, which is a staff presentation on twenty twenty-five Q two and summer enforcement. Performance update, we now have a presentation from Robert Higgs, Director Enforcement and Bylaw Legislative Services. You may begin as soon as you're ready, thank you.
Through you Chair, good morning. Uh, today I do have the twenty twenty-five Q two and summer enforcement performance update. SOPs and staffing changes have been ongoing for over a year. However, the bulk of the changes that directly affect the community were rolled out in January of this year. It is felt that this is an opportune time to provide council with a performance update. As we now have eight months of objective analysis of how the changes have been received. Next slide, please. Change management is always challenging, particularly given that seventy percent of the people leaders are in roles. They were not in eighteen months ago. And a similar scenario exists for a significant number of our enforcement officers as well. We've provided an overview of the change management timeline and as you will see. We have just completed the short-term phase, zero to six months. And are now transitioning into the medium phase, six to eighteen months. In phase one, we observed the expected patterns. At recent town halls, public feedback on enforcement has shifted. While concerns about too little enforcement remain dominant. We are now also hearing that some areas feel over-serviced. And others have had violations significantly decreased, requiring us to adjust patrols dynamically. To be clear, the call for more enforcement is still the louder narrative, but it is no longer the only one. Early signs of medium-term progress are also emerging. For example, we're starting to hear occasional positive comments about improved property standards. Suggesting consistency is improving in some areas. As we move into strategies, we're using a more data-driven resource allocation system. Enhanced performance metrics now guide smarter, evidence-based decisions on where resources go. These metrics are combined with community feedback for a val- for a balanced approach. Ward-level insights are provided via the two report attachments. Attachment one is ward-specific request for service report. And it shows service requests by ward. It supports a risk-based proactive deployment model. And this is for context only and not our actual deployment model, but it does give you some insights. Attachment two is the ward-specific enforcement action report. And this verifies our response data and demonstrates how actual enforcement efforts align with the identified risks. There is strategic value as metrics are increasingly critical for planning and prioritization. Decisions are supported by both data and management expertise. And methodologies have been shaped by council and the community and focuses on three main pillars. Increased consequences for non-compliance. Proactive deployment to address issues before escalation. And preventative measures to reduce future risks. If we can go to the next slide, please. For increased, uh, penalty or consequences, we have transitioned the majority of penalties to a graduated system. This allows first-time offenders to focus on education with appropriate fines. Whereas repeat violators have higher fines to reflect ongoing non-compliance. In regards to operational improvements, we implemented the external properties, property standards SOP. So we're referencing the summer inspectors with this. We provided enhanced training and direct supervision, and these changes have delivered measurable results. Penalty notices issued went up five hundred and sixty-four percent. Our contracted cuts went up a hundred and fifteen percent. And fines issued went up ninety-four percent. The key takeaway, stronger processes and graduated penalties are driving compliance and improving enforcement outcomes. Next slide, please. For proactive deployment, we're using intelligent-led enforcement, which is involving predetermined patrol routes based on metrics. And this enforcement loop, uh, strategy reflects the where-to-enforce methodology. It's generated over eight thousand seven hundred penalty notices and over four hundred thousand in penalty fines have been issued. The proactive external property standards inspections has risen ninety-three percent. And a proactive online review to identify advertised short-term rentals. Identified approximately six hundred and sixty short-term rental locations. Efforts are ongoing to bring all unlicensed operators into compliance. Next slide, please. As far as preventative efforts, we had sent out letters to all properties that had received enforcement action. Uh, in twenty twenty-four, uh, putting, putting them on notice that we were going to be proactive. And that we would be, uh, quickly engaging in enforcement efforts. And the success showed that seventy-three percent of those properties that received the letter. Did not get a complaint from the surrounding community this year. Strategic communications continues to support bylaw, preventative measures through ongoing public education, targeted outreach. And awareness campaigns that encourage compliance and foster community safety. Next slide, please. With the addition of the analyst role, we're now able to make better use of data. While our record system wasn't built for metrics, we are able to use it to help us understand service demand and priorities better. Parking enforcement makes up seventy-two percent of all service requests, but not all require the same response level. You'll notice the pictures on the slides, uh, those are all priority one issues. A car near a fire hydrant, uh, emergency response vehicle being blocked by parked cars. And a pool enclosure that would allow, uh, infants to gain access to the water. We now assess requests by priority, not just volume. Safety is the main factor in determining the priority, and this applies to both enforcement and property standards. The operational impact is that it enables smarter deployment of resources. And improves efficient, efficiency by focusing on higher priority issues first. Next slide, please. So the success of our changes, under the priority calls, you can see our priority one. Uh, parking, which is urgent safety parking, that represents twelve percent of our calls for service. We have a consistent one hundred percent response rate to those parking complaints. Priority two and three make up the remaining eighty-eight percent of requests for service. And we have an eighty-one percent response rate to the priority two. And a fourteen percent response rate to the priority three. Most of the priority three involve timed offenses requiring near immediate action. Under the parking penalty notices, uh, the volume of, uh, penalty notices issued has increased to eleven, by eleven percent. And the fines have increased, uh, by eighteen percent. The difference between the two numbers shows the impact of graduated penalties. Non-parking penalty notices have increased forty-seven percent, and the fines issued have increased sixty-six percent. Next slide, please. Uh, the success of changes with property standards. Uh, the time from complaint received until first action. For priority one, it's been an eighty-nine percent reduction in response timing. Priority two has been a forty-one percent reduction and priority three has been a sixty-nine percent reduction. While those are great achievements, we obviously will continue, uh, to improve and gain efficiencies. Time from first action to resolution, uh, for priority one has had an eighty-three percent reduction. Priority two has had a fifty-one percent reduction and priority three has had a seventy-eight percent reduction. Next slide, please. So this report highlights that the investments made by council have been effective and instrumental in improving the community standards. This initial assessment period has demonstrated significant progress with notable productivity improvements achieved. While managing ongoing community service challenges. Our teams have established a strong foundation for continued success, even as addressing outstanding requests remain a priority. The change management plan is delivering as intended, reinforcing confidence in our strategy and timelines. Looking ahead, we anticipate continued stabilization and a gradual decline in service requests he- as efficiencies take effect. To build on this momentum, we will focus on embedding process improvements across all units, strengthening community engagement. And maintaining transparent reporting to council as we advance long-term goals. Next slide, please. Thank you very much.
Not surprising, we have, um, a few questions, um, from councillors who have been very vocal about better, uh, compliance. First up councillor Santos, followed by councillor Maderos and councillor Plesch.
Thanks so much through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, first of all, thank you Rob and the bylaw enforcement team. Um, if, if Madam Clerk, you could go to just slide number two, please. Um, I know that this is just the first six months of really putting to work. The changes, standard operating procedures, the new officers on the front lines. And, um, m- many changes that we've done, that you've done, Rob. And, uh, last night when I was driving to the Jays game with my best friend in the car. Who used to live in Brampton and now lives in Windsor. She was driving around the neighborhood and said, last time she was here was in January. And she was driving around the neighborhoods with me and said, wow, the city's looking a bit cleaner now. Neighborhoods are looking cleaner now, and I said, I'm so happy you noticed, and myself as well, I've noticed too. Um, over the past few months in my neighborhood walks, before and afters, the follow-ups that you've attended with me. Do we have a lot more work to do? A hundred percent, that's why we've got the medium term and the long term, where some of that behavioral change is gonna happen. But is there a noticeable difference in some of the communities I represent? Yes, and the good news is that, because of that, we are reading out the really bad ones. And, and director, uh, Rob Higgs, you've seen a lot of the really bad ones on the walkabouts door-to-door with me. So, I'm really pleased about that, that being said, just a, a few questions and thank you very much, uh, you guys have been awesome. If we could go to slide number. If we could go to slide number four. Um with the RRL program in place to deal with many of the slum landlords in our community. A lot of residents ask me, how are you going to proactively find all of these rentals that are illegal or legal? So if if you could go to slide four, Madam Clerk. Um Rob, if you could explain what staff are doing in bylaw to figure out uh where some of these rentals exist. Proactively, since that last one, proactive online review.
So uh so the proactive online review, that bullet specifically refers to the short term rentals. Uh and they were scanning um uh the online advertisements. And uh looking to see what didn't match with what has already been registered. That process is is absolutely ongoing and is being done. And can be adapted into RRL and ARUs as well, once we fine tune the processes.
That's great. So that's what I'm looking for is because residents are asking me through the RRL, you're only focusing on legal units. Well, no, we're not. And in fact, I know that there are steps being taken through online means, Kijiji scans, Facebook ad scans, et cetera, in the future. So that we could figure out what these longer term rentals are and make sure that they all have licenses. So just wanted to highlight that. The next one um is in regards to um do do do, sorry, um. Just three one one in operations. So I know we're doing some. So three residents still think that when they call three one one, that their problem's gonna be resolved immediately. And there've been a lot of changes that have been happening on the operation side of bylaw enforcement. And we're getting to call sooner. We've strategically prioritized those calls and where to go. Um but from the from the communication side, how are we closing the loop on the three one one? Cause people still either call three one one or file their complaints online. But don't necessarily know what a P one and a P two and a P three is. So many times residents will complain about excessive three hour parking on a street. When really they should be reporting, you know, blocking access to emergency vehicles. So I think that that process um from the three one one side. If I can get some comment on how we're fine tuning that.
So we're constantly working in collaboration with our internal partners in the city of Brampton. Both in streamlining what the messaging actually is as as issues are identified. And then we're also for in in regards to uh how they report. But then we're also working with strategic communications constantly to to increase the narratives around. How to best uh get service from the city of Brampton.
Fantastic. And 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 I I do a lot of that door to door myself as well and email by email. Um final question, so this is um a new thing that many residents that I represent are bringing up. And that I've observed myself. We're finding more and more grocery carts, abandoned shopping carts. In our creeks, in our valleys, in our green spaces. Um and residents that I represent are asking what the city is doing about it, what we can do about it, if we've even thought about it. I know from the community services side um that we collect them. And we've had preliminary discussions on how to address it, but if I could get staff to just confirm where we're at on that and what bylaws it applies to. Um perhaps we can have a discussion item in the future to pass a motion if you need one. But just some comment on what we're doing about grocery carts being left in our green spaces.
So so the applicable bylaw is the Parklands bylaw and it's it's very clear there already, but I will defer to. Commissioner.
Through through the mayor to councillor Santos. So we're working uh with bylaw to bring uh a fee or a bylaw forward in. Uh this year's budget process actually uh for the storage and then uh essentially fining for the retrieval of a shopping cart. We collect about five hundred, four to five hundred per year. Uh so we're hoping that that would help change the behavior and be a revenue stream in the short term.
But who are we fine? Like who who's being fined? Who's getting the charge?
So that would be to the uh business owner. We're still working and refining the details. Uh we're actively working uh right now with the the bylaw team, but we'll bring that forward as part of the budget process.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. And happy to move your seat of the report when the time comes.
Okay, thank you councillor Santos. Next up is councillor Maderos.
Thank you uh through you, uh Mayor Brown. Um I think I have to get on the board before councillor Santos. Cause she's been stealing my thunder for the last interventions. So I all I have to do is ditto and echo councillor Santos. Uh um thank you and and I echo especially the appreciation for for staff. Everyone involved from the commissioner down to the admin assistant, everyone who, different departments I know are contributing and and. Even to the residents, you know, the fact that we got here has been a lot with residents who care, have been vocal. And I know there's been a a lot of communication, stakeholder relations and so on and and. You know, you've been on the hot seat and you've handled yourself with uh such a pedigree and experience and professionalism, I thank you. Um you know, publicly for what you've done. Um just specific on uh echoing what councillor Santos suggested regarding. The misnomer that we do have the um you know legalized basement apartment enforcement. But we are still uh uh enforcing illegal basement apartments. And we're and we're focused on that. And that's not something that's an aside, but you know, our resources are. So just maybe uh if you can illustrate a little bit more, when we look at these incidents and you know drilled down a little bit at the numbers. Some of that would be the response as part of these numbers.
Through you, Chair, and and absolutely, thank you very much. Uh while it was not the focus of this specific report. Um as to the that piece, it is very instrumental to how these numbers were achieved. Is internally, we're consistently getting efficiencies. We've combined resources before we had an overlap of duties and scope between. The additional residential unit and the RRL efforts and and bottom line is is we now have a rental compliance unit. It's now amalgamated, it's a re-energized task force with a very clear direction of resources. And that is part of what will continue to drive the efficiencies that we're, we'll continue to see as we go through the change management process.
Uh thank you. And and through Mr. Brown, and just just lastly, when you talk about, for example, property standards. I'm noticing more and more um in sort of my area, uh homes that used to be sort of uh. Rental homes or so on are on are are for sale now. Regardless, you know, it's probably uh um you know, good coincidences, one is, you know, the federal. Sort of crackdown on student visas, also it's our proactive approach. Are you finding now, for example, with those problem homes that probably get, you know, constant tickets, are we seeing less and less? Uh or are we seeing more compliance and and different addresses? Meaning you're not getting those same ones who we constantly spend all this time for, because I've noticed in in my area, especially even where I live. You know, those two or three homes that get plastered with tickets, I'm not seeing that anymore. And I'm not seeing the garbage in the front. I'm not seeing. So have you noticed that some of these problem consistent um you know uh rule breakers? For lack of a better term, uh you're seeing more compliance and in what you're giving is new people, new new things that are happening.
Through you, Chair. Uh I don't have the specific uh stats in regards to the ones going up for sale. I am very comfortable in suggesting that I too have noticed that trend. There there are a lot more with for sales. Um these metrics that I have presented in the report, I found to be uh the most. Uh would be the most useful for council to to get a view as to what is going on. There are a lot more metrics that we're using for performance driven. Decisions by managers as to what they're doing. One of them will be the repeat offenders. And uh and whether we're having more or not and how do we deal with that? So I I can't speak to it directly, but that is absolutely a metric that is available to the managers.
Yeah, and and through you, Mr. Mayor, just lastly, the education piece and and getting out, you know, the word, I think I think this is a good news story. Uh I know it's a lot of time invested on your part. Uh I did see something on social media, I'm not sure, about some type of protest. Against uh rooming houses that they were trying to organize. Um but it it it's um it's good that, you know, you're investing that time, so keep it up. Keep the communication and and I know residents still get frustrated on, you know, that one or two uh cases and and good for them. Because they keep our our feet to uh the fire. And I just want to thank you again for all the work that all of you guys are doing. So thank you so much. Through you, Chair, thank you.
Thank you councillor Maderos. Next up is councillor Plushy.
Thank you, uh Mr. Mayor. Um I guess I'll start by saying it's nice to hear that, you know, things are getting better in wards one and five and three and four. Two and six, they're not getting better. I have more calls, more complaints, more issues today than I did last year. So and the data shows that.
Yes, it does.
Goes back to again, what I've been saying. Yeah, I nine and ten, who is not represented here today, but uh as of right now, but two and six, councillor Barr and myself. We have more residents, we have larger landmass. I need more officers than they have and then they have, okay, in my area. Police. I also have the amount of complaints that I get from residents that say that they put forward a complaint. And then they hear that either the officer or somebody has phoned the person that owns the vehicle. Or is has has is is starting the issue, they received a phone call giving them the heads up that we're coming out to ticket. And it was, and I didn't believe that. Like I wouldn't believe that we would take the time and actually phone somebody and say, hey. We're gonna come out and give you a ticket, or we're gonna come out and if you don't clean up this garbage in front of your house, or you don't cut your grass. We're gonna come out and give you a ticket. But then one of your officers at one of my town halls said, that's what they do. I and and I I don't know, like, they have too much to do in a day. To start making phone calls to give people the heads up. Now, I I like the fact that we do some preventative stuff. I like the fact that we can do educational pieces. I like that. Not for one person though, not for one offender, for a community, yes, let's get out there, let's bang doors, let's drop off pamphlets. And let's, you know, and I know that we do that. Let's continue to and and see how and and one of my questions would always be, how much more do you need from from us? To say, you know, we we want to be able to do that. E- even, you know, pure regional police right now. When there's an incident in an area, they go out and they knock doors and they talk to the community, not just trying to get evidence to solve the crime. But to ensure that there's still public safety, they're still there. And and so I know that 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 we're doing that and and I want to continue to to ensure that um that that is happening. If you have any comments on that, Rob.
Through the Chair. Uh thank you very much councillor. Uh one of the um constant refrains. That I'm telling my staff is that uh we're very metric driven in so many areas of the of the department. Uh but metrics are are really the conversation starter and and there's always more behind them. Uh in regards to your your observations, very valid on wards two and six. That is what we would expect to see mainly because yours is likely the large, the fastest growing wards. So just given that and and we will get the stats to back this up. My belief would be that the the increase is largely due to the population increase. And and so. While it, I guess what I'm trying to say is that that isn't a measure that it's not an effective enforcement strategy. It's we're trying to catch up to a wave.
Yeah, I know, and I realized that after, you know, either you can say non-decisions from previous councils or whatever they were facing at the time. And nonetheless, um you know, yes, I have a major growth municipality, councillor Barr and myself. But we've always, we we've also already grown to the point where um you know, I believe today, I think we're the largest. Uh you know councillor Tour will um will fight me on that, will argue that with me, but I believe today two and six um are the largest. And not to mention, I still have, we still have a hundred and fifty-two thousand people coming to Heritage Heights. Which is in its own, a ward bigger than, an area bigger than any other member of council. Aside from nine and ten, two and six, right?
And uh through you, Chair, uh. So the the other attachment does show us in regards to those wards getting more officers. You can see by the and for ward enforcement report. That there is more enforcement action being taken place. One caveat again, that is only. Uh when we actually take enforcement, which is which is a worthy report. But what you wouldn't see is when we drive down streets proactively and there's no issues there. And so it's it's not a perfect report, but it does show that we're following the risk.
If you can, and if you can, Rob, just you could take that other piece back. I don't know who's making those phone calls. If it's three one one, that is is, you know, if they have a note on the file to to make a phone call to this person. Because they're kid constantly um you know, offending the property standards bylaw, then make that stop. And and let's go out and and do the fines and and it was, I I heard it the first time. The officer that you had there with us um confirmed that that's what happened. And then I kept on, then I heard it a couple other times in other areas. And I and I wasn't sure what to say. I couldn't believe that um this was happening and and. A lot of residents take offense to that. They feel like it's, you know, it's 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 not fair. As for, I I I thought I had some questions that I would probably look to see if I could ask them. And potentially have to ask them in camera. Uh as of right now, I think I'll 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 stand down, but um I might still add that. Uh after councillor Keenan's uh questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um and Rob, just to echo councillor Maderos, fantastic work. I've been in those town halls where we uh we get the brunt end of stuff and you you handled it well always. So to you and your team, thank you. Um obviously, we are seeing tremendous change, I I will say that, and I'm speaking for wards uh three and four. Um and we are seeing those houses go from uh rooming houses back into family dwellings. And I think it's part of everything we've done along this council table. Um and to even though the feds did immigration, let's not forget, it was us that started it with um the motion to write the letters to indicate the issues. Not just to the feds, but to the province as well. Um so well done, colleagues. Um just to your report, and I'll just ask questions really quickly, because everyone's kind of um covered all of that. When we look at the numbers, obviously the residents are gonna call and ask these questions, so I figured I'd proactively ask them. Um the response rates for priority one and two uh parking calls, fantastic, hundred percent and eighty-something percent, can't complain. Can you just tell me what is a priority three call that's only getting a fourteen percent? Like what would be covered in that priority three?
Through you, Chair, absolutely. Through you, Chair. So are you looking specifically for parking or do you want them in all the categories?
You can just give it to me, if if that fourteen percent covers all categories and not just parking, or is that just parking?
Uh that was specifically to parking.
So you can just give me that, what would have, what, just so that I can explain what a priority three may be in a parking situation?
Uh so the two to six AM would be a priority three. The three hours in excess would be a priority three. Those are the, those ones would be the bulk of them. And and again, just the, it's noted in the report, the biggest challenge with those is that they're timed offenses. So to get there within that timeframe is, given the volume of them, that's the problem, is that there are so many in that category. That it's, we get to that position.
Right. Do we, do we have a percentage based on parking infractions, how many parking fragments that come in? Or that are called in, on a percentage basis, how many are priority three versus priority one and priority two?
Uh I did it the other way, but I can get you that. It's it's like eighty-eight percent is priority two and three. But I can, I can give you that, it it's there, just didn't break it down that way.
These are a lot of the complaints that I'm still getting, are obviously the priority three ones, which is overnight parking and three hour parking. I'm seeing that quite quite a lot, so it's making me think that, yes, we're delivering on ones and twos, which are extremely important, but to the residencies are also important. Um so I would be looking for, what is our plan to get that fourteen percent higher? Would be my, and I'm sure you're gonna say more staff, more resources, which we'll look to the big boss for that one later. But um the uh that, so that was that question. I think you've answered it and you'll give me the other information that I need, based on the percentages. Thank you. Um, on the property standard side, um, a lot of, uh, how long is it taking for property standards files to be investigated? So, I know we're having a lot of issues around that, or at least a lot of complaints. Residents, um, the officers are assigned seven business days, files are open for three or four weeks. So what is the timeframe there and, and what are we looking to get it down?
So the, there is that slide that, that shows the timeframes and what we've reduced it, and it is in days. So for priority ones from our first action, we went from eighteen days down to two. Priority two incidents, we went from twenty-five down to fifteen. And priority threes, we went from eighty down to twenty-five. So what, we're, again, we go by safety and, and other criteria. So we really have focused on the priority ones and twos, and we will continue to focus on priority threes to try and get that down as well. So, we also have, my apologies, we also have the first action to resolution. The only caveat I would put there is that, uh, while we are absolutely working towards that, some of that is we're trying to get compliance and. It, it's a little more problematic with that one to go, but we're definitely measuring that as well.
Great, um, so just back to, um, the parking aspect of it, how often, um, is the parking loop adjusted? Um, and updated with complaint data?
It's ongoing. Um, I don't have the specific timeline, but we're ongoing, like. So essentially, one of our supervisors, like on those proactive loops, is paying attention to see. When a, when a street is no longer having any violations on it. Uh, we, we have a process where the, first that observation is made. Then we do an audit to, of an, on the road supervisor. To make sure that the street's actually being attended, and that's why no violations are being seen. And then once that's validated, that's when we dynamically change it. And, and it really is driven by the data as opposed to a specific timeline.
Okay, um, that's, I got a couple more, but I think you've covered most of what I need, so thanks again so much to you and your team. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion moved by Counselor Santo, seconded by Counselor Keenan to receive the report. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to our next item, which is. Oh, yes, ten point three-one, um, development charges by law amendment to support purpose-built rentals. Um, do members have questions? Counselor Mederos.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so just regarding the motion, and I do know. Um, I just have a amendment just regarding, uh, the occupancy aspect of it. And I, I do know that there's been some, uh, feedback, um, from, uh. Um, regarding this report from people in the industry, and some of the stuff I've heard was regarding, uh, uh, the occupancy. We had it stipulated for eighteen months, and just wondering, uh, Commissioner, would you be open? Uh, besides wanting to provide an amendment for thirty months, um, and the reason being, I think, just realistically. Um, you know, my understanding, the technical aspects of building buildings and, and so on, that, uh, the timing, eighteen months is just very, uh, short. Uh, so I'd like to move an amendment for thirty months. Uh, maybe would, would you be okay with that, uh, or are there any concerns?
Through the Chair, maybe I'll just address how we came up with eighteen months, and then certainly we'll take direction from council as to changing that through the program and any other comments. So we looked at, um, an average occupancy out of all sort of, uh, housing typology, uh, across the city. And eighteen months was bearing out as the average. Um, and, um, granted, with some of the more sort of high-rise typology, that might, uh, be a bit longer. But certainly open to any comments or questions from members of council.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, so I do see Counselor Plushy's on the board. Um, I guess I'll wait, because I, I would move that amendment for thirty months, and I believe Counselor Santos is, is willing to second it.
So why don't we deal, can we deal with this one first? Okay, um, Counselor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I would definitely agree with, um, uh, the building construct, like when you're doing a con- a condo. A lot of time spent going down, coming up, and I believe this is to do with the occupancy portion.
Yes.
Uh, the occupancy portion, they're saying, has to be occupied within thirty months. So, I, I think a way to look at it too is maybe, once you start construction, you're building it, so. Um, you kind of have that window. If, if you're looking at a ten-story building, eight-story building, it's completely different than if you're looking at a fifty-story building. So, I, I believe there does need to be a caveat. What that is, is, you know, some of these builds could take three years to do it, fifty, sixty stories. Um, on average, I would say eighteen months was probably something more on the line of like a twelve-to-fifteen-story condo.
If I could, through, uh, you Mayor Brown, through to Counselor Keenan, maybe just seeing the, the change there on the screen, maybe a friend, friendly amendment. Maybe up to thirty months, so this way, um, you know, we can incentivize. Which I believe is counselors and, uh, councils intend to incentivize things getting built faster, so up to as opposed to two thirty.
Yeah, for, for, for me, it's more about when they start building and not really when they finish it. So I think it's, it should be more so there, but anyways, that's my experience of it.
And Counselor Keenan, I've got one question on that front too, um, and I support Counselor Mederos's amendment. I've heard the same feedback from the Federation of Rental Providers about the construction timelines. When we get our building faster funds, um, and it's based on our housing targets. At what point do they consider, um? At what point do they consider in terms of their count? Is it occupancy, or is it, um, at what stage to hit that target is required?
Through you, Mayor Brown, uh, it's my understanding that it's, um, when a building permit is pulled, so when the foundation permit is, uh, issued. Is what they use as their, uh, start.
Okay, perfect. Because like, it, it is, it is a challenge this year, we did not get our funding. And so if those building permits are pulled, it means that, that, what was it, what did we get last year for building faster fund? Do you recall? Did GR maybe is your? Finance? The, the premier came and presented a check?
Through you, through you, Mayor Brown, uh, in confirmation with, um, uh, GR, we believe it's about thirty million dollars.
Thirty million dollars it was?
Through you, Mayor Brown, stand corrected, twenty-five million.
Twenty-five million, so we lost twenty-five million just because we didn't have those building permits. I don't want us to lose that, uh, um, again. So I'm glad that it's building permits, not, um, occupancy. Um, okay, so why don't we vote on this motion first, and then we can, I, I've got a number of other questions too about this, and so, um, all those in favor of. I, I can take it as, we'll just vote on it, sure. All those in favor of Counselor Mederos's motion, seconded by Counselor Santos? All those, all those in favor, motion carries. Um, in terms of the, the main, um, report, I'm not sure if finance wants to answer this. Obviously, I've got, um, uh, the privilege and the challenge of presenting the city's budget each year. And so I'm just mindful that we have the financial tools for every, I want more housing. Um, obviously, we're in a housing crisis, but I want to make sure we're in a position where, um, we. Don't impair our ability to have a, a budget that is consistent with affordability. People are struggling to make ends meet, just like they are struggling to. Um, to purchase housing. And so if someone, uh, it's almost counterproductive if you say, we're gonna make it easier to get housing, but we're then gonna put it all on your property taxes. And that's why I think it's important to sort of have this conversation, um, in the open about the, what we have to weigh. And so, I'm excited about this program. I think it's exactly what we need in terms of shortages for, the, the sector that we're short is, is rental. We've heard that loud and clear. Um, if half the people who say they're gonna build actually do. Um, how do you pay for it? Because I'm now understanding that, um, that it has to be paid back the same year. Can you explain that to us and what the cost around that are, and what tools we have to pay it back? Because for me, what a non-starter would be a property tax levy.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, through the Chair. Um, so, from a budget perspective, um, we are, we will be finalizing that in the next few months. So what we would do is we would look at where, what, what uptake have we hap- has happened in November and December? And then we'd have to prepare financial proposals of how we're gonna address that. Um, for the purpose-built rentals, I believe half of this would be about thirty to forty million dollars. So, we would create a finance, a financing plan for this. Um, the legislation basically, um, uh, it encourages, uh, council to make the decision of how to pay for it. It doesn't mean you have to pay for it right away, just how are you going to pay for it? So, uh, we would develop a financing plan for that thirty to forty million dollars. Um, it could be a combination of, uh, half funding, BFF funding, could be a combination of, uh, property taxes that come in through these purpose-built rentals. Setting up, uh, uh, repayment plan through that assessment growth that comes from the properties. So, to, to answer your question, Mayor, as the, each budget is developed, we would identify the exempted amount. And we would identify a funding plan, uh, to repay that exempted amount.
Okay, and I'll ask this, and I've asked you, um, this, uh, priority council, but I'll ask it, uh, again. So, you have a block of houses that are dilapidated houses, and someone's gonna bring them together. Um, and build a purpose-built rental, we wouldn't be getting any development charges if we allowed those houses to stay stagnant. Explain to me why we have to pay ourselves back for the development charges we wouldn't be getting.
So, the, the, the development charge legislation, and, and we have him sitting here if we want to get into more technical details. But my understanding is, in, in simple language is, we have a binding agreement with the development community, and that's the development charge study. That says we are going to build one point eight billion dollars of projects, here's the list of the projects, and this is how we're gonna fund them. So now the development community is expecting us to deliver this. If council exempts, is, passes a non-statutory exemption in the DC bylaw, basically, we've taken that portion out of the funding. Of this one point eight billion dollar reconciliation. So now the development community wants to know, how are you going to fund that? That, so we've created a gap ourselves, and the DC legislation says that we cannot ask the future developers to pay for that difference. So now it becomes the illness of council to come up with that, and it doesn't matter if it's, uh, dilapidated or, it, it, like, the, the legislation doesn't care how. The exempt, what the exemption is for. Um, so we effectively create a liability, and we can fund that at other levels of government, if they give us the money, they could fund it.
I- i- is this our bylaw or provincial bylaw?
This is the, the Development Charge Act, this is DC Act, like this, it's.
But the stipulation, we have to pay our, that's provincial, but the stipulation we have to pay ourselves back, that's our own bylaw, no provincial.
Through you, Mr. Chair, it's, um, partially through, uh, section five, and then each of our, um, bylaws. Or, uh, sort of restate this statement. And the principle, just to build upon, uh, uh, Mr. Mederos's comments. Uh, the principle is, it's not explicit that you have to top it up, it's explicit that you can't reduce DC, or you can't, uh, increase. DCs to cover the loss. So, another way to look at it is, is when you have no development. Um, and therefore no DCs, zero percent of zero is zero, you have a full cover there. Whereas if you don't have that and it's an exemption, then, then they're, it, like everything council does, it's a, it's a calculated risk.
Yeah, and this is where I find it complicated, is what if there already is servicing, um, for an area, um, what if, um. You know, this was funds that were never anticipated, literally, it was gonna stay dilapidated, it was never anticipated, there's no incentive to do this, we're gonna spark construction. So zero of zero is zero. And so I think that's what we need to get our heads around, is, you're saying, it's interesting, you said you can't raise DCs. To pay for, but you're, you are allowed to reduce.
A shortfall, correct. Um, and just on the point, Mr. Chair, that you just brought up. The, um, DC bylaw, each of our DC bylaws stipulates that, um, DCs are to be paid. Like, the starting point is DCs are to be paid, uh, irrespective of, um, whether that particular development requires. A piece of infrastructure. So that, that's, that's kind of it. Not, having said that, we have, you know, we have certainly, uh, lots of political reasons. And incentives to, uh, uh, for the province to, to build product. Uh, it's a balancing act, but yes, it's, it's, uh. Although not explicit that you have to top it up, you need to show up how you're gonna replace that money, because you're not allowed to. Increase future DCs, tie future council to, to, uh, doing that.
Okay, um, so the last question, I know the council's gonna have a lot of questions too, what if you're replacing nothing? Like, there's money not coming in, so you're not, what are you replacing? You weren't gonna get that money.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I, I think, as I led with that, with the fact that, um, you don't have to. You have an answer if there's no development. Right? Whereas if you are providing an incentive and you suddenly have two thousand, three thousand, four thousand units. Then suddenly you would have a shortfall in your DC reserve.
So on that note, employment, we exempt employment. Are we paying ourselves back for the employment development? We have to, so we're right now, what's our financial plan to pay us back? We have a ton of employment happening right now because of our incentive. You're telling me we have to pay ourselves back for?
Yeah, I think, uh, we, including the report, we estimated about a hundred thousand dollars, so it wasn't, um.
It was only a hundred thousand?
Yeah.
It's only office?
Yeah. So we had, we had estimated in the, in the report to council that.
But, but we know of, we know of a number of developments where there's office being built right now because of this incentive program. Okay, what, sorry, my, my questions caused more questions, I'll give other councillors a, a, a chance to ask. Um, Counselor Plushy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that answer, because I, I, I didn't realize, and I think a lot of members of council didn't know either, it's constantly was, we. The more and more we talk about this, um, the more information, uh, comes out. In terms of the, um, the DCs, uh, for purpose-built rentals. Um, how did you come to determining, uh, what that shortfall was going to be? What did you use to determine that, what that number is, and what, can you repeat what that number is?
Yeah, uh, through the Chair, Counselor, uh, it's around four thousand units. And the estimate, uh, for the number of units has come through our planning team. Uh, through estimates of the applications that they have, uh, in the pipeline and, uh, uh, what they expect will come through this. So that's the estimation basis for that.
And how much are, how much is it?
Four thousand units, around four thousand.
No, 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 the dollar amount.
Uh, I think fifty-six million dollars, or fifty million dollars.
Fifty million ba- and that's based off of the four thousand units, um, that isn't capped. It's, we know of four thousand units in the pipeline, but if somebody was building condos and wanted to change it to purpose-built rentals. Then they could take advantage of this, um, of this reduction al- also, correct?
That's correct. The estimate is based on the forecast that was provided.
On the forecast provided, but because we don't have a ceiling, like the five thousand units has a ceiling, this doesn't have a ceiling, that could balloon to, to, to. We don't know, which is okay, that we don't know.
Yeah, we can control to a, a cap if we need to, yeah.
Right, and then based off of the unit sizes, what did you determine, um, uh, the, the, the sizes to? To determine the, the development charge rate, um, how did you determine, like, what sizes were being built? Is it three-bedroom, two-bedroom, one-bedroom, is it a mix? Um, I know it's, it's, it's hard, again, a lot of these questions are hard to answer, we can't answer, and I know that. Um, because we can't actually find out what the number is, and, and when I say, you know, how did you determine, you know, what the, what that. Number was going to be, what did you use? You know, in the end, we don't know what is going to be built. We don't, we haven't said that you have to, it's gonna be this percentage of ones, this percentage of two-bedrooms, this percentage of three-bedrooms, right? It could be a hundred percent three-bedrooms and then a hundred percent DC reduction, which is X amount of dollars. But today we're dealing with the fifty million that you guesstimate, and how did you, how did you come to that fifty million?
Can you, uh, I'll just, uh, bring our manager of, uh, uh, revenue, he'll explain the basis.
Uh, through the Chair, the, uh, Counselor, the application that we received from the pipeline. That had the breakdown of the one-bedroom, two-bedroom and three-bedroom, and, uh, we used that data to come up with the, the DC exemptions.
It has a, it has a mix between the ones, the twos, the threes, so, and when then we took the percentage of whatever probably used. What has been built in the past, right, correct?
Uh, through the Chair, through you, Counselor Plushy, uh, what I understand is based on the pipeline data, finance use and average. To come up with, uh, the range that presented in the, the report.
So, but it could be three bedrooms, let's say it's a hundred percent three bedrooms, four thousand units. Let's, why not add, you know, another thousand units, um, to that mix? Because Joe Smith or Benny Smith down the road decides that his condos are. Because Joe Smith, or Benny Smith down the road decides that his condos are going to be, um, purpose-built rentals now. What, uh, what are we looking at for three-bedrooms at five thousand units?
So, through the chair, the, the way the incentives are staggered right now, three-bedroom, if it's all hundred percent three-bedroom, that it's hundred percent waived, um.
Yes.
So.
So the number would be a hundred billion dollars?
So.
I know what the number is already, I, it's a hundred million dollars, I'm just wanting you to say it.
So our DC rates for, uh, for three-bedroom over, over seven hundred fifty square feet is somewhere around thirty-eight thousand, let's say forty thousand. Uh, and, uh, you said thousand units, so.
So, five thousand units? I have the, I have the numbers based off of your calculations, is, is, uh, five thousand. It's a hundred thousand, one hundred thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. Based off of large apartment dwellings over seven hundred and fifty square feet. Oh, no, that's for four thousand units. So now we add a thousand units on top of that, we're talking about more, a hundred percent. So now we're getting into the, closer to the number of the five thousand units on the DC reduction at the fifty percent. Right?
Uh, through the chair, DC reduction of hundred percent for the three.
Yeah, I know, but I'm referring to the other report on the fifty percent DC reduction for five thousand units, which has a ceiling, can't go above that. Again, the PPR doesn't have a ceiling, can potentially go above that, similar to what we did at the region. But, there is certainly a need, and as, you know, the mayor talks about, you know, these dilapidated buildings, um, or houses that we want to repurpose and, and, and make apartments, you know. On the other side, we also have, um, at dead ends in subdivisions that are overgrown, uh, have encampments, and, uh, have people dumping on them, that we also want to, you know, have a fifty percent incentive to, uh, for them to be able to build. And hopefully, potentially, get more people, uh, at that po- price point of where they can ho- own a home. I, I, I talk to people all the time, and I'm sure members of, of council talk to people, uh, also about, you know, opportunities to live in an apartment as opposed to, you know, living in a basement. Um, on the other side of that, I talk to a lot of people about, you know, a lot of first-home buyers that don't want to move to, what was the place the person said to me yesterday, north of Shelburne is, starts with a W, something like that, where they're selling houses for seven hundred thousand dollars, north of Shelburne. Sorry? No, that's south, way south. North of Shelburne, which is far, but also he is, uh, owns a family-run business here in Brampton. That commute is insane, I digress, I apologize, and I'll move into my other report after. But, I just want, you know, I want it to be made aware that, you know, what we did is, has, has an impact too, right? And, and so, you know, it's, it's, i- it's certainly different, the finances, uh, response on Monday to the DC fifty percent initiatives to today's DC initiatives. I, and I wonder, Mr. Mayor, if, you know, I wonder, but I have more questions later.
Um, Counselor Tor.
Thank you through you, uh, Mayor Brown. Um, just regarding that estimated forty million dollar foregone, for, uh, uh, revenue from, um, development charges. That's the number I was looking for early on, when we first started having this discussion, uh, a couple of months ago, uh, about introducing this program, and that's where my hesitation, it still exists in supporting this program. Uh, because, like you said, there's that gap on, and, and it, there's a, there's going to be a gap there, and we don't know who is going to top up, uh, that money. Um, at the region, uh, October seventeenth is a deadline. We find out if the province gives us money, if not, then October twenty-third, goes back to region, we'll see what happens there. But here at the city side, this is a set install until November twenty-twenty-six. That, that forty million dollar estimated gap, like, how, how are we going to, uh, come up with that money?
Counselor, uh, we, i- in the absence of any funding from, uh, the provincial or federal government, that would be something that will probably have to be made up, uh, not probably, it will have to be made up by the property taxes. Um, it's also important to keep in mind that, uh, these units, once they're built, they will be generating property taxes that will be coming through their assessment growth. Uh, that assessment growth can be used as a payment mechanism for these DC, uh, foregone DC charges. Uh, of course, the magnitude of how, how much is, uh, approved, and how much we're putting makes a big difference in terms of how much is needed to repay it. Also, keep in mind that, uh, the amounts that will be used for repayment will not be available to offset increases in property taxes from operational needs. Uh, so, in effect, there will be a net, uh, uh, property tax increase, but it can be justified that it is coming from the assessment growth from these units.
And that property tax increase would have to be applied across the city, right? It's not just where the units got built.
Yeah, we can also implement a program called TIG, which would, uh, which would basically formally, formalize that, like, these units are being, uh, repaid from their additional, uh, property taxes that are collected from them specifically to repay this, and that can make it a little more, uh, one-to-one.
So, so that just reaffirms my doubt again, that, um, in the absence of federal or provincial money that will go towards DC discounts, it will be our property taxpayers, our residents, that will be funding our own growth.
That's right.
In a city where historically we've always been underfunded. Um, and for that reason, again, like, if my colleagues are okay to accept that, um, that, that's a choice everybody can make on council. Uh, but, uh, but without having that guarantee that the province or the federal government is going to step in and, and, um, give us the money for this, I am not willing to accept that our property taxpayers are going to pay further property tax increases to fund something that the development community should be funding. So with that, I'll, I'll still be voting against this, thank you.
Counselor Tor, if I can just add one additional piece of information that we provided in the briefing note. Uh, uh, we have noticed a, 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 there, uh, a huge, uh, uh, decrease in, uh, collected DCs this year. And, uh, based on where the economic environment is and so on, we expect this to be, um, to probably drag on for a few years until we recover and so on. So, that really impacts the cash flows that are available from the DCs to, um, to, uh, uh, really put into the capital program, for the growth capital, uh, program. The DC incentives, to an extent, can actually, uh, um, accelerate some of those DC revenues, bring them up earlier, and make them available for our capital program. But at the expense, as you have, uh, uh, mentioned, uh, counselor, it will be at the expense that the property taxes will have to make up for that in the longer term. But it will help us with us, at least continuing with the capital program, growth capital program, for over the next few years.
Yeah, so, again, like, it's a short-term win, um, but on a long-term basis, our property taxpayers or residents are going to. But thank you for that, Nash.
Okay, um, and just to say, Counselor Tor, I would not support a property tax increase to pay for any incentives. And when I, when I prepare the budget, that's not something I would, um, include as a option. Yes. Counselor Tor.
Um, thank you, Mayor Brown, but it, but that's what I'm trying to understand here. If we're not gonna raise property tax money, and we don't have a guarantee from the federal or the provincial government to fund this, where is the money gonna come from? I mean, like, that's, like, it's gotta be something, like, the money's gotta come from somewhere. Future DCs can't pay for this, that's under legislation.
Yeah, you can't lower the DC, what I, what I'd say is, I believe the deputy mayor has a solution for us to keep control of this program that doesn't exceed what we have the capacity, um, to, uh, fund, and I think I'll, I'll wait for his.
If I can, if I can propose this solution, I think it would be better, similar to what we did at the region, to say, if we got a commitment from the federal government and the provincial government, federal budget's coming out very soon, we're going to Ottawa to advocate. Provincial legislation will, at some point, they'll enter summer vacation and come back to work, and they'll talk about it too, and, and we'll see what happens. But, once we get that guarantee, or any indication that they're going to fund us, there's, maybe at that time, council can say, this is a great idea, I would fully support it, and say, let's go ahead, let's do this, because they're gonna give us the money to do it. But we don't have the money to do it.
Um, and Counselor Tor, what I'd say to that is, we have vehicles to pay for things like this, and whether it's housing accelerator, building faster, we don't get the funds, we don't get the building permits. What I'd also say is, um, Counselor Asante was the one who suggested adding the mixed, um, use pathway for employment, because we're trying to encourage employment with the higher, um, eh, by having that included in. But I still hear from the industry, is that no one will be building buildings full of three-bedrooms. They're all saying that the market is for one-bedrooms, and so, I would be shocked if we saw, um, someone come in with a building filled with three-bedrooms, but they said it's not, it's not affordable at the moment. Um, but I think what the deputy mayor is gonna suggest will allow us to keep a cap on, on costs. Um, and yet, oh, sorry, Counselor Keenan wants to go first, then the deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, just really quickly, and, um, I know that Berry, um, did a property tax. Instead of doing DC incentive, they did a property tax incentive where it phases in over ten years, which brings me to this question. Or, if, if we, uh, if we do this for these buildings, are we capable of taking the property tax that these buildings would, um, contribute and pay that portion directly towards DCs? Um, given the fact that we're looking at it in areas that it's, the infrastructure is there, and so on and so forth. Is that an option? I'm just asking if that is an option that we're allowed to take, where we take the amount of that property tax over a course of three or four years and pay it, that way it's not raising other people's property tax, the people that are in those buildings are paying for it, is that an option?
Yeah, through the, yeah, yes, absolutely, yeah. Uh, through the chair, uh, counselor, absolutely, we can dedicate that, that's the program I was talking about, TIG program. Uh, the only thing is that any assessment growth from that usually would have been used to offset operational property tax increases. And in this case, because it will be dedicated to, to repayment of the DCs, it won't be available to offset those operational property tax increases. Just want you to be, uh, like, fully aware of the impact.
That was my only question, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Sorry, uh, Nash, I think at that point, can you just re- so, can, oh, yeah, can you just go through that again, that part?
Absolutely. Uh, so, uh, through the chair, counselor, uh, um, new properties, when, uh, when we develop additional properties in the city and so on, they result in assessment growth.
Yes.
Every year, and that assessment growth typically in the budget every year is used to offset part of the property tax increases required by the city to operate.
Yeah.
Uh, if we do what, uh, Counselor, uh, Keenan suggested, and we use part of that assessment growth, in this case, related to those properties, in order to repay the DCs.
Yes.
That part will not be available to offset the property tax, uh, operational needs. So, there, there is a net impact that, like, uh, the operational needs will need to be still added as a property tax increase, instead of being offset by these assessment growth numbers.
But will they eventually be offset, or no? No, okay, 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 all right, so.
Uh, they will be, uh, uh, let me qualify that, they will be offset after the repayment of the DCs is completed. So if they take, we can decide based on the rate of how much we wanna use. If we use ten years, twenty years, once that, those DCs are repaid, they go back into the property.
And what's that called, that, that, that whole concept?
TIG.
TIG, how do you say?
Uh, tax incremental, um, T-I-E-G.
T-I-N-G.
Yeah, I can provide, uh, and so on, sorry, I can't remember now the exact.
I'm gonna ask for two things, and I think this will help. Um, I like the reference to federal funds, so there's different ways we could do this. Uh, let's see what the uptake is, let's see what the amount is, then we have various tools to address it. Mayor mentioned some, this is another one. So, by the time we understand what the uptake is, we can take a look at it then, and use maybe a combination of tools to pay back those DCs as well. So I'm gonna ask that we have a report back whenever we have an update on TIG, is it?
Yeah.
How do you spell that?
T-I-E-G.
T-I-N-G, so staff report back. I'm not gonna put a date on it, cuz you can align it with my next one, which is staff report back, uh, if we hit two thousand, uh, applications as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, and then maybe budget conversations, you want this report, then you can have it then, otherwise we'll have it when it's two thousand. But let's look, I like the reference to federal funds too, so if it is a lot of, we'll see what the uptake is, we'll see what the cost is, we'll see how it affects the property taxes, then you have a couple of tools, um, in your toolkit to help address that. So I think that kind of may be a pass forward, yep.
Uh, through you, Mayor Brown, through you, to, uh, Deputy Mayor, since certainly staff could take that as a direction, but just to be clear, to, uh, implement a TIG, uh, that would require a citywide, uh, CIP, so staff would have to undertake that.
Okay, you can put that in the report, yeah, yeah, just a staff report, yeah.
I just wanted to make that clear for council, that it's not just a, a program we have to come back with, a citywide CIP.
No problem, it's just an option, I'm not saying it's the option, or even part of a option, let's just look at it, see if, we should look at it, that's all, that's all I'm saying. And then, um, I'm just happy that we're encour- incentivizing, um, larger three-bedrooms. Yeah, I believe that's what families need, I believe there's a dire need for that in the city of Brampton. Um, and so I'm encouraged by that. Uh, I know we have, I think I saw in the report, three percent vacancy for rentals, a reference to three percent. So we need more purpose-built rentals, so this is one way to help. Um, but we'll, we should continuously be monitoring, uh, the progress, and continuously mon- monitoring the options. Everybody brings valid, uh, concerns, and, uh, everybody brings valid options to address those concerns as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the wording would be to, would reach as two thousand units to reassess financial implications. Counselor Tor.
Thank you through you, Mayor Brown, just wanna clarify, um, based on the questions Deputy Mayor saying asked, um, and Counselor Keenan's questions. Nash, if you said, oh, after the twenty-year period, let's say that's the period where the property tax pays for this, um, DC revenue, um, it, it would start offsetting that incremental operational cost after the twenty-year period though. So the twenty years, you're, you're not going back to offset the twenty years, that the rest of the city would have funded the increase in the operational cost in the city, right? Am I correct?
Through the chair, uh, you're correct, counselor, just to, uh, rephrase it, to make sure that, uh, uh, throughout the twenty years, that assessment growth will not be available to offset, uh, the property tax requirement. After the twenty years, in the year twenty-one, it will go back, and at that year, it will offset the property taxes going forward, cuz it will become available.
But then, yeah, but it'll be going forward, but so, in, in the meanwhile, let's say, you know, two thousand units gets built. Uh, the increase in operational cost is still, and if you're using the property tax just for those thousand, two thousand units to fund DCs, the rest of the city is still going to pay for servicing, and the increase in servicing that was generated because of this growth, correct?
Yeah, uh, um, through the chair, counselor, uh, yeah, through the, uh, if there are any additional, uh, operational costs that are resulting from that, and so on, there will be. But, uh, it's hard to tell whether they're specific to these units, or not specific to these units, and so on. They will not be available to, to offset those, like, additional operational, uh, uh, cost requirements.
Okay, so, so additional units that come on live, the property tax that those will generate could pay for the DCs, but they won't pay for more spaces at the recreation center, more snow removal service, more garbage pickup, more every municipal service that's gonna, that it's gonna generate, right? So, like, again, that just goes back to the same point, but I, like, I don't have faith in the fact that we have a lot of tools in our kit to fund for this, cuz if we did, then cities would have been doing this for a very long time. We wouldn't have discovered these tools in twenty-twenty-five. And I think, uh.
Mark.
We have to add.
So I just want to add, the, the TIG is actually not of a specific program.
So I just want to add, the the Teak is actually not a the specific program uh, we would use, so if we could potentially change that language, just potential use of. Assessment growth and or special purpose levies, I think those are the tools that that we would uh, look at.
That's not what we asked for, we didn't ask for a report on special purpose levies, we know what special purpose levies are.
A special area, yeah, special area levy, like we can pinpoint it, uh, an area and say.
But I think, I don't think that's what you asked for Deputy Mayor.
So if we're just focused on assessment growth, then maybe just say potential use of assessment growth.
Okay. Um, councillor, you done councillor Tor? Councillor Plessy.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, just on the Teak and um, uh, in this, in the uh. Uh, CIP, I I just wanna caution, eh eh, maybe potentially ask for that report back earlier, uh, because. A CIP takes nine months, nine months of staff uh, time and work. Um, to to bring that forward, so eh, my suggestion would just be to bring, to bring that, if you're, if that's. Where you're going to potentially lean towards, then let's get that report up in front of us ASAP. Because if we, if we go this route, um, that's gonna take nine months for us to, from this time we, that council pulls the trigger, right? That would be just my suggestion to councillor Deputy Mayor Singh, thanks.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor Singh.
Um, just the staff, so is this okay or do you want, yeah, sorry, uh, to the commissioner. Option. Okay. Should I, should I leave options for payback and then? So report back options for payback. It's not tied to your, it's, yeah, you know. Yeah, two separate lines. And staff report, yeah, we make it two separate. In the meantime, I just wanna thank staff for all the work, I know it's been a lot of uh, reports back, so. Uh, uh, planning staff, finance, um, mayor's office, everybody involved. Um, thanks for making it happen and getting us the information as fast as you can, thank you. So, sorry, just um, the council approved the sta- staff be requested to report back. Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, um, councillor Mederos.
Uh, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, I don't wanna belabor the point cuz I think that the motion's in a good place and I thank everyone's input. Um, I I think councillor Tor, you mentioned something which was important with some of those service impacts and and you're talking about the recreation centers and all that stuff. That we don't know what are some of those impacts, the only thing to flip, you know, the conversation just to add is by not building it, you know, we just had a discussion on bylaw. Uh, we just had a discussion on, you know, all those other sort of impacts that we'll have to deal with when people don't have housing. Uh, another strong aspect is, we have a big, for example, presence of construction workers right here in Brampton that work on a lot of these projects. They're the ones who are gonna drive small businesses, they're the ones who go to the local restaurants after, they're the ones who go to local markets. So when, when the spinoff impacts of, and and this is not something new we looked at, when uh, I was the the chair of uh. Uh, uh, planning last term and along with councillor Fortini, uh, we actually tried pushing where we said, you know, waive DCs. So we incentivize uh, uh, people to build because not only collecting the property tax. Is that we couldn't afford not to build because of the issues of property standards, uh, all that stuff that goes with it, so. You know, not to belabor the point, I think the motion's in a good place, but that does beg to sort of think and justify by us making this investment. There's so much spinoff return and it goes back to the opportunity cost of not building this, I think is greater, so I do appreciate the concerns, it is hard. Uh, but at the same time, doing nothing is is not an option, so thank you very much.
Um, councillor Tor.
Thank you through you, uh, Mayor Brown. Um, can, I I would ask the deputy mayor and and my council colleagues if. If we could do this the other way around where we find out how. Point four, point five, like that staff report could come back to us and we find out our options for paying back and then we can adopt. Uh, that's when we can approve the development charge incentive program, at least you know how you're paying for it, right now we're. Buying something, we'll find out later how we pay for it, I'd love to do that at Costco if I could, but. Um, we need to find out how we're going to pay for this before we decide to buy into this program, that that's. To me, that's the most logical thing to do is find out how the, when that report back comes to us, what those options are for paying back. Uh, what is, eh, any numbers that are associated to that, that's what we need to know before we go ahead and say, yep, we're gonna do the discounts. Like if, if if council colleagues are open to that, that's something I'd be willing to support to say, let's find that, find that, let's get that report back. If it's a great report, we're all satisfied with it, let's go ahead with the program, otherwise we're doing this thing of, you know, buy this now, we'll see who pays later.
Thank you councillor Tor, and you have been consistent throughout both regionally and citywise, councillor Plessy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, and I agree, thank you councillor Tor, I wanted to thank you for, you know, all your comments, not only here but at the region. Um, a lot to take in, a lot to, um, you know, based on, based our, our decision-making off of. Um, we had the conversation on Monday, different item, but on um, on Monday, there was uh, some discussion about. The cost of the infrastructure that needs to be put into the ground, so on the PBRs, we understand it's four thousand units. We also understand it could balloon to five thousand units, um, the P, uh, purpose-built rentals are more. Um, s- uh, area-specific, I, from my understanding, and I don't know, but but maybe if I can ask. Um, from my understanding, the purpose-built rentals are, you know, really close to the go-stations, even Bramley downtown. And maybe Mount Pleasant, I don't, I don't think so, but um, uh, possibly. Um, those three areas, are there, are there other areas in in Brampton, or is it typically those three?
Through you Mayor Brown, through to councillor Plessy, uh, council might recall at the workshop that we hosted, we, uh, the council, uh, put on. We, uh, put out some criteria where purpose-built rentals tend to gravitate and to your point councillor Plessy, they tend to be in our MTSAs along major. Uh, corridors simply because the occupants of PBRs tend to rely on the amenities that you happen to find in those higher intense areas.
Okay, which MTSAs, which are mainly around, I can add Steels in here Ontario to that, to that, um. The other three, so four locations, um, out of those four locations, do we need to upgrade any? Um, any of the infrastructure? I think I, I would look to finance because finance is the one that makes the comments about upgrading infrastructure. For uh, for the units, do you believe that based off of those four site-specific locations? And I would ask maybe public works if the sewers need to be uh, upgraded in, you know, Bramley cuz. We all know that Bramley sewers are are end of life, no, at, they're tired. Can anybody answer?
Through the chair councillor, I would really suggest like, uh, the commissioner of planning or commissioner of public works might be better to answer, uh. Like these specific questions on that.
Uh, through you Mayor Brown, through to councillor Plessy, um, based on the four, the location of the four thousand and change units in the. PBR pipeline right now, off the top, uh, most of the heavy servicing would be dependent on the the region's capital program. Because they're adjacent to regional roads and whatnot, uh, certainly as the, when I'm looking at them here, they're advancing through the site plan approvals process. That would give me more certainty that servicing is either already available or soon to be available, but I can't answer for certain. Uh, if a particular application has servicing at its doorstep at this point in time.
Okay. Um, I I think, you know, based off of my knowledge of of applications that have come in the past. Um, the uh, special holding provisions that we've put on applications. Uh, for certain areas, I would think that some of the infrastructure that's in the ground needs to be upgraded. Uh, for versus X number of units in, in the majority of of those areas, other than Mount Pleasant. Mount Pleasant's services are, they're almost shiny, they're, they're new.
Uh, through you, uh, councillor Plessy, through to uh, uh, Mayor Brown, uh, through the efforts of this council, um, but a year, year and a half ago. You were able to advocate to the region to ensure that they work on upgrading the servicing along Queen Street to to uh, get the. Development and density that was coming along there, so I know that the region is working on that program with spurs along Kennedy for. Applications like Centennial Mall, so, uh, I know the region is ambitiously doing that, but the level of precision and timing, I, I'm not aware of that.
Thanks Steve, um, uh, is, what about buses, are we gonna need more buses in these areas to service? You know, if we're, if we go up to fit, I know the number of five thousand units that we're, that we're using is is, what was it, fifteen thousand people, twenty thousand people? The actual number, not the, not the true number, because the true number is what we use, but the act, no, sorry, the other way. The number that we are told we have to use is two point.
Through you Mayor Brown, through to councillor Plessy, the uh, PPU for Brampton is about three point six persons per household. But the number we're told to use historically by the province is lower than that, so therefore, um, the growth we're seeing now is much higher. Uh, because we never hit those markers.
The number we're told to use is what?
About two point four, two point eight.
Okay, so, you know, we're looking at the potential, let's mix it up and say fifteen thousand people. Um, because that's the number that the five thousand units was, were using fifteen to twenty thousand people in those three specific areas. Uh, Bramley Go, downtown and Mount Pleasant, do we need more buses to handle fif- twenty, fifteen to twenty thousand units? Twenty, fifteen, twenty thousand people?
Those numbers with me, but yes, absolutely.
Yes, the answer is yes, okay, thank you, in spe- in those site-specific areas to get people from A to B, yeah. And maybe even a call to Metrolinks to say, hey, along this corridor, we have X number of, you know, more people. You know, maybe you need to up our service, maybe you need to finally deliver two-way all-day-go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um, we have, uh, the motion, sorry. Sorry Mayor Brown, if I, if I could just, when I read point five, I just want to uh, ensure I interpret council's direction. Um, is council suggesting that we uh, cap the program right now at two thousand units and report back? And the only reason I say that is, as staff are preparing the report back on the two thousand units, other applications may come in the pipeline. And should a future decision of council choose to terminate this program, you may get into a situation whereby applicants gearing up. Could be, um, not not take that as a friendly, so I just, I put that out there for council's awareness. Yeah, so I I think the answer is that you'd report back at two thousand and not accept new applications, right, fair to say, can Deputy Mayor?
Are you okay with that? Cuz then you're right, if we have a clear, open for the public right now, there's no.
It's like legal risk.
I see you nodding, so I think we're okay.
Okay, yeah, units, that's right. Okay.
Chair, sorry, uh, um, also if we're uh, capping at two thousand units, effective for now until we report back on this. The DC bylaw will have to be uh, reflective of that cuz it's currently set to the two five thousand, uh, to the five thousand.
I'm sure the court can amend the bylaw, yeah. But um, you're confusing the bylaws, this is not the, you said it's currently set at five thousand, currently it's open-ended. You're talking about the other, next one. Okay, we have the motion on the floor, record a vote, all those in favor, please stand.
You Mayor Brown, I see councillor Mederos, councillor Fortini, councillor Power, deputy mayor Singh. Mayor Brown, councillor Keenan, councillor Plessy, councillor Asante and councillor Santos. And all those opposed. I see councillor Tor and. Don't think we have anybody online at this time, so that motion carries.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. Okay, the next one is, um. Um, how long do you think this will be take, probably pretty quick, right councillor Keenan? Yeah, okay, okay, so there there's a funeral that they're mentioning, so we'll do this side and then we'll break for lunch. You know, this is the, um, I think Sunfield Homes, is that the next one, ten point four three? Who held then point four one? Quick question councillor Mederos? Is it, have you got a quick, is it a quick one? Oh, you have points, okay. Well, vary the order and deal with Sunfield Homes because they are here in attendance. Councillor Keenan.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, so just really quickly, um. You know, thank you so much to everybody on this, um, I know it came, this is a good news story for the city of Brampton. Um, and I just wanna really highlight, uh, Melinda and Shannon from planning department on your incredible work always. But on just the speed and I I know this probably isn't done on the regular working hours, you probably burn the midnight oil getting these reports on such. Uh, short notice and you do a great job with them, so I just really wanna highlight that and say thank you. Um, and and a shout out to all my council colleagues for working on this, um, bringing up any issues and stuff that we have. Um, and and chatting about it, um, to make sure that we get everything covered because these are amazing units that we desperately need. You know, three and massive, three and four bedroom units in the city of Brampton that covers multiple wards. Um, so I do have a a quick motion here just to keep the direction with staff going. Um, so the motion is the staff be directed to continue reviewing the non-for-profit CIP affordable housing applications with Sunfield Homes. And staff be directed, directed to begin, uh, preparation execution of an agreement of a nonprofit entity of Sunfield Homes. Once all the information is received and further that the eighteen point seven two million be earmarked. Uh, for the three Sunfields affordable home projects, once the next installments of housing accelerator funding program funds are received. And only after all other previously approved recipients have received their allocated fundings. And that no additional housing accelerator funding installments, um, be issued, not issued if not received. So let me just read that last one, and further that no additional housing severing funding installments are received, that no funding would be issued, so this is just. If if and when the funding comes in, that's when it's paid and only after everybody else has received theirs. Sure, yeah, remove number two. Uh, he's, I think Rod's gonna second it. Oh, Martin's on, no, I don't know who's on.
Councillor Power.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, I was just gonna second it because we have one development in seven minutes.
Perfect, happy to take that.
Okay, any other speakers? Deputy Mayor Singh.
I'm just reading it cuz I actually didn't know this was coming, um, I guess my only concern is, we just talked about. Potentially half our DCs for the rental program potentially as well. You mentioned half, so you're gonna, by passing this, we're gonna handcuff ourselves. Because.
What?
What do you mean what? Well, no, what do you mean what?
What's that?
You said what?
Why don't we have one speaker at a time, Deputy Mayor speak and then.
So we just said we might, as an option, use half, you mentioned building funds faster. And so we don't ha- know how much money is coming, right? So if we allocate it for this now, then it takes it for potentially what we just passed earlier. Because then we won't be able to use half to pay the DC, then we definitely have an issue for a payback.
So why don't, why don't I suggest?
So it was originally a report back, I was good with that, that's why, I just wanna see everything lines up, how many units come in, you know, then make an informed decision. If you're, you, cuz it'll handcuff you more than that, like for the budget.
So, uh, I I think. I think the easiest way Deputy Mayor is just to keep number two and number two could be, um, including the breakdown of half funding and the report back. So we, we know that we're not exceeding the half funding we have and we'll know our reality November fourth.
So we, we know that we're not exceeding the half funding we have, and we'll know our reality November fourth. And so I think, Counsel Keenan, you have no problem with number two? At the breakdown of half funding?
Two is striked out, that's why I'm confused, I, I, because the, the report was, I think, published last night, right? So I didn't have a chance to see this, you know, and then we're voting on eighteen point seven two million just off the cuff. And so what I would suggest is have a report back, see all the half funding coming down the pipeline, what is allocated for, then make a decision, I have no issue. So I was, I came in wanting to support it, I was gonna support it.
Counsel Plessy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Deputy Mayor Singh obviously brings up some good points, because we're always talking about, you know, making changes and, and, and what we're, what we're doing and what we need to do in terms of the betterment of, of the city, the municipality for sure. I think with, you know, in its entirety, though, everything that we've done up until now, I think it's important to recognize, you know, has been indefinitely support for the housing that is much needed. The, the housing to get people who normally couldn't get into a house, you know, this certainly provides that ability. But then also with that being said, you know, the, the DC reductions that, that we're also undertaking, the, that half funding hopefully supports and, and hopefully is a tool that we can use to, you know, to pay back those dollar amounts that, that definitely need to be paid back. But also, other levels of government need to show up, need to step up, just like at the region when we said, you know, other levels of government certainly need to, need to do something, either, you know, make us whole or, or show, show others, some other kind of incentive, like, you know, there, there was all, all the talk about the reduction HST and yet, you know, which is the, which is the main portion of, of cost for any, any new home buyer? You know, it, it, it's definitely more than the DCs that go into the, into the house purchase or the sale. So, you know, the other levels of government certainly need to, to come forward. But I, I think, you know, it's a good point that, you know, while we're talking about half funding, you know, on the go-forward to, to payment, to repay any development charges if, if that ability. Or we also need to look at, you know, the DCs that we're paying into as well. So I think it's, it's definitely an important point. I think, given that what we've done up today, up till today, though, this is, this is definitely something that I would, I would support in its entirety. I think this is what has been worked with the applicants, with staff for, I think, are we going on three, three, four weeks now in, in these discussions? So certainly support this and, but also support us looking at, you know, the future funding to, to pay for any shortfalls that we have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, if we could ask, who could best answer this? November fourth? November, November fourth, we know the federal budget's coming, we'll know if we have a housing accelerator fund in 2025, correct?
Through you, Mayor Brown, the, the budget would be the indicator, first indicator for certainty of the continuation of the accelerator fund program, yeah.
Do we have funding, accelerator funding from 2024 that is not allocated?
Through you, Mayor Brown, all of the 2024, all of the half funding received to date has been committed. The, the report before council today clearly articulates that. And we were, staff were asked to report back with options for Sunfield Homes to pursue the half funding program through the CIP being one of those options. The report also outlines the PRB as an option. And then the report alludes to, I guess what is later on the, today's agenda, potential DC incentives.
So what, what I'm going to suggest, I think this achieves what Counsel Keenan's saying, what Counsel, Deputy Mayor's saying, is proceed with this, proceed with this. But have a staff, like, don't stop the train, because I know they want to get building permits, and that's great. And I see the applicant nodding that he wants to get shovels in the ground, proceed with this. But give us a staff report on the alloc, we put an application to federal government for housing accelerator funds. We listed all these projects, if we're taking projects off, if we're moving things around, council should make the, the, the final determination. And so I think having that staff report on the full picture of, of, of half funding and is, is important if we've used up all the funds in 2024. And I know Counsel Keenan wisely put in this, if no additional housing accelerator funding installments are received, then no funding will be issued. And as you know, we're, we don't know what's going to happen November fourth. And so we put that in as a precautionary motion. Counselor Tour? Counsel Keenan want to speak next, or no? Counsel Tour?
Sure, through you, Mayor Brown. I'm just having trouble understanding all the math that we're doing today throughout the agenda. So the eighteen point seven two million dollars, where's that number coming from?
Through you, Mayor Brown, through to Counsel Tour, that is the request from Sunfield Homes based on their three submitted applications. Staff have done some preliminary analysis of, of their applications to date. And the range we see is anywhere from seven million to about twenty-one million. Counsel will recall, Sunfield Homes came back to Planning Committee on Monday with the correspondence, official correspondence to the city indicating they're pivoting their application to a nonprofit organization. Staff still require information from Sunfield Homes to review before determining the exact amount.
But that eighteen point seven two million dollars goes towards how many affordable units?
Through, through you, Mayor Brown, through to Counsel Tour, it's seventy-eight units.
So what is that per unit?
Through, through you, Mayor Brown, through to Counsel Tour, it's approximately two hundred and forty thousand dollars per unit. When you compare the per unit cost, per unit cost to previous decisions of council, it's roughly in the ballpark of, of that. In fact, it's a bit lower and better, like, if, based on the number of units you're getting for the application. But again, I would request staff do a little bit more time with the applications, come back with a full analysis.
Appreciate that and those details. This project is a really good project, we have the delegation from Sunfield Homes as well. Everybody is supportive of affordable housing, and that, that comes to our city, it's much needed, desperately needed. But at the same time, just on how the half funding program works, we're committing to money that we don't have yet, just like we committed to discounts that we don't have money to pay for yet. That's coming from this bottomless pit of housing accelerator fund, which is not a bottomless pit. The, the, all the money that we had allocated or that we were given for 2024 has been allocated to every single project. We don't have the numbers that are coming in the future. On November fourth, Carney's not, Prime Minister Carney's not going to get up on stage and say Brampton gets X million dollars. It, the budget is just going to highlight, here's the housing accelerator fund, if it keeps going, here's how, how big the fund is, and we don't know what that program could, that could be a whole new program. That wasn't a program that this government put in place, could be a whole different program, very different requirements. Could be a program that every city needs to reapply to and ask for a certain amount of dollars. But without knowing any of those details, we're going to commit, and this is my personal belief, give sort of this hope to an applicant or any applicant that would come forward, that should we get this money, that you will get this piece of it. I, I don't think that's diligent on our part to, to overcommit ourselves when that happens. When, if we can get that report back to council in January 2026, or whenever we find out how much money we're getting, would love to see that big check come to the city, then you know, you know, folks here that have come forward with affordable housing projects could come to council, we could make a decision, here's how much money we're spending on these many units. That's the, I don't know, like, I'm getting lost today on the agenda, how we did with DCs and how we're doing with this. And, and I was told this is one of the magic tools that's going to replenish the DC reserve. I don't know how many tools we got in the toolkit, that's more than Batman does. But we need to find out what that funding is before we can commit to it. So I'm still okay with the first two points there, to receive the report, to direct staff to report back, but all this additional, it, this is a motion that's coming off the cuff, that, that we haven't discussed this at a committee? This is coming straight to council, like, we haven't, we haven't discussed this. We haven't gone, this wasn't the motion that was on the table today, till it was, it got introduced by Counsel Keenan. So I'm just saying, like, we can't just do this off the cuff like this. The appropriate way to do this again is to get that report back from staff once we understand how much money is going to hit the bank. And that's something I'd love to support, but I'm not going to support this again. And it's not, to the folks in the audience, it's not about the project, it's about the process. Like, we can't do, this can't be the process, we can't be setting this of the precedence on how we're committing funding. I think Counsel, Commissioner Planning wants to say something?
Yeah, through you, Mayor Brown, through to Counsel Tour, certainly appreciate the, the tardiness of the delivery of the report. But just for a quick reference, page three of the report into page four outlines sort of the chronology of council's decisions to allocate half funding received to date, just as a reminder for council. And in all of those decisions, we have reported back to council with copies of the agreements, et cetera, et cetera. So if there's a level of consistency, precedent has been set.
Well, thank you.
Counsel Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I'm just going to try to unpack, I'm listening to what everyone's saying, so I just want to unpack. So currently, we're saying that we don't want to allocate funds that we don't yet have. Have we already approved an application that allocates funds to a exact same application, per se, for not affor, for affordable housing? Have we earmarked a commitment for fourteen million dollars in money we do not have yet?
Through you, Mayor Brown, through to Counsel Keenan, yes, we have. Page three of the report says Brampton has fully committed all funding received to date as well as a portion of anticipated, of the anticipated third half advance. I have the breakdown by project.
So, so that's already been done, precedent's been set on that, we, we've already done it. The, the next question is, the way that I have this motion, if we didn't receive any funding, no funding would be given to the proponent, if we didn't have it, it wouldn't be given, correct?
Through you, Mayor Brown, through to Counsel Keenan, that's my interpretation of the.
So we're protected if no money comes in?
Correct.
Okay. The, the next question I have, and, and is maybe on the half funding, if, if I can get Chris to maybe come up and, and we've had some conversations on the half funding. So what we're hearing from colleagues today is, we're unsure if it's going to be continued. My understanding is we were given a commitment for the four-year commitment of the half funding of a hundred and fourteen million, twenty-eight point something million per year. And any conversations that you've recently had, has there been any indication that we will not be receiving the next two draws?
Through the mayor to Counsel Keenan, we have had discussions specifically with Minister Robertson's office on the initial four-year agreement that the city of Brampton has around the housing accelerator fund. They've indicated no, there's been no indication that they're willing to withdraw from the initial four-year agreement as part of our federal advocacy with the pre-budget submission, as council might be aware. We've also advocated for, for an extension of the program. Those discussions have been ongoing, at this point, I would say, they're very preliminary and so it would be too early to talk about an extension. But from our discussions on that, there's been no indication that they intend to roll back the initial four-year agreement that we signed.
Okay, so we can anticipate that that third draw is coming in December for the twenty-eight million?
Through the mayor to Counsel Keenan, I'd obviously wait for the budget for final clarification on that. But from a staff-to-staff level, we haven't been given any indication that they're looking to claw that back.
Okay, thank you. So that gives me comfort that it's coming, but still, if it doesn't, my motion still protects us that it doesn't, that it doesn't happen. Based on the timeline, this is the most advanced affordable housing that we're getting ready to build. So I believe that these will be built before any of the previous ones that are funded. We're, they're weeks away from pulling, building permits and getting started. These are fantastic units, and I don't want to hold it up. We know, we've done this in the past, we've approved these, we know what the dollar value is, we know what we're getting for it. And there's enough in here that protects us that if the money doesn't come in, and it also states that anybody who has applied for previous funding gets their funding. So if, and if that's not there, then the shortfall would happen here. So I want to continue with my motion and the way that I had it drafted to make sure that this can continue a, along the same path.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, Deputy Mayor Singh?
All right, two questions. One is, we're talking about two sets of development charge, charges waivers, okay? The way this motion is passed, will this money be prioritized and confirmed first before we say we want money for development charges from the half? Will it handcuff our ability to use money for development charges? Because we've allocated this money in advance of getting half money.
Through you, Mayor Brown, through to Deputy Mayor Singh, I'll take a crack at part of your question, maybe defer to finance for the latter part. But the way I interpret clause five there is that there's an earmark of eighteen point seven two million for the three projects pending the next install, certainty of the next installment of half funding.
So we won't be able to use, as we talked about, so we might as well even just cancel the report because it's off the table to use this money for development charges, because we're going to allocate it right now for this project. Do we use that, lose that flexibility?
Through you, Mayor Brown, through to Deputy Mayor Singh, and maybe I'll defer to the treasurer. The half funding program, to my knowledge, was never used to offset any gap in development charges, but I'll defer to the treasurer or mark for any clarity.
Did Mrs. Saga do that? Miss Saga did that.
Through you, Mayor Brown, through to Deputy Mayor Singh, I understand that Mrs. Saga's counsel was intending to use half funding to offset their DC shortfall, but I have no body of evidence to suggest that they can for certain, or they have.
Through the check, also, Miss Saga did indicate that they plan to use half funding to offset some of these impacts. We also, in our capital program, we have allocated part of the half funding towards some transit buses and other things that relate to the housing.
Yeah, so I'm not saying that I want to use this for development charges. I'm not saying I want to use it for potentially the five thousand coming online. But this just takes away that option, because we're going to allocate it right here and now, that's what I'm trying to say. And secondly, to the question, I think if I heard you correctly, you do not have confirmation of a nonprofit?
Through you, Mayor Brown, through to Deputy Mayor Singh, they've, Sunfield Homes has submitted correspondence, which was discussed at Monday's PDC, indicating they're going through the process of registering their nonprofit entity, in which case the applications will be filed through that. But that, they have not completed that process, to my knowledge.
So that's why I was in favor of just a report back to dot her i's and cross her t's. I think due diligence for this amount of value is very, very important. I think it's extremely important, so I don't think I'll be supporting it this way. If it's a report back, I'll support it, though, thank you.
Okay, Counsel Keenan?
I'm just making sure that, I, I want to make sure the, the funding is allocated, so I want to scratch out number two. It can be a different motion that we bring back all the half funding and where it all is, but it's in here. So I would still want to take out number two, because it wasn't part of what I put forward. And, and Steve, just to you quickly, there's twenty-eight million dollars coming now, and twenty-eight million dollars in 2026. Of this, if I do the math correctly, that would leave over twenty-four million dollars in the following draw if everything paid out, that could be used towards whatever is necessary. There's still twenty-six million dollars remaining on our original pledge from the government after this being allocated.
Through you, Mayor Brown, through to Counsel Keenan, there's some criteria stipulated in the agreement with the federal government in order for us to meet our targets, to get that full amount. Assuming we meet that, our targets, then sure, that, that's correct. But based on the data we know, data that was presented to council around housing starts to date, we know that that being one of our targets, it's, it's something certainly the federal government is looking at.
Okay, thank you, that's all for me, I'm, I'm ready to vote when anyone else is.
Counselor Fortini?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just going back to Steve, what you said. Two thousand twenty-four, all the money was allocated. Two thousand twenty-four. The money was allocated, so have we given the money to them and have they started building, or we just give them the money, or we have it aside until they do build?
Through you Mayor Brown, through to Counsel Fortini, excellent question, so all of the money that has been allocated to date, we have agreements with um, those proponents. Those agreements have milestones in which they will receive a certain portions of the total amount, so in many cases, uh, the um. Funding has flowed through, the project that I can say for certain that have started building are the two Habitat for Humanity projects. Uh, those are the only two, the others are still in, in early phases.
Yeah, but my question is the money, has it gone to them, or we have it on hold until they actually start putting the shovel in the ground, not giving them the money just for a permit?
Through you Mayor Brown, through to you Counsel Fortini again, so the agreement that is signed with the proponent. That the money has been allocated to them, all of the, the money gets released in stages when they complete certain stages, so site plan approval and whatnot. The only uh, proponent to date that has received a, a majority of their funds is Habitat for Humanity because those two are, you know, actively in construction.
Great, thank you.
And we have a build day coming up, I invite everyone to join us for Habitat for Humanity.
Mayor Brown, again, I noticed number seven was struck through from there and I would, I'm under the impression that council. Wants a report back on the um. Status of half after.
Scrap that, Council Keenan?
Sorry, so the intention of this is to allocate that funding to them, so anything that would contradict that in here, I'm happy to have a report back after it's. So that can be a separate motion, that staff come back with half funding. This is my original motion, might scratching number two. Let's have you direct a report. Yeah, it's redundant. They can report back on it, but it doesn't.
Okay, we're overly complicating this, um. Deputy Mayor, um, Singh?
Um, so, just to be clear, there's no report back then, right, just seven and two, or it's drug, is that what you intended?
So this is going to allocate the funds to them, if you want to report after that?
I think that's what seven's saying, right?
So that, so that's after the allocation?
Yeah, the post issuance of federal budget, yeah.
Sure, sure.
Seven, oh yeah. That's what. No twos before. Yeah, um, just remind me again, the criteria we're supposed to meet for half funding? I know you brought a progress report, um, where does that stand, uh, in that report, how close were we to meeting our targets?
Yeah, through you Mayor Brown, through Deputy Mayor Singh, I'll prefer to Melinda, maybe she can speak to the process that we use to bring updates on the half funding.
So we'll be submitting our annual report on October tenth and we'll be tracking our building permits and that's our housing target. And then they'll also be looking at if we've met our commitments through the half action plan.
And what was it before, uh, we had a progress report earlier this year, no?
For the Housing Accelerator Fund, we did submit a report last year, last October, we met all of our commitments and got full funding.
So you don't know what it is up to date, any idea?
We're probably around eighty percent of our target.
Okay, alright. So.
Eighty, eighty.
Okay, so. I, it's a big amount, and uh. I had known before, you know, I, I, I thought it was gonna be a report back, I still stick with the report back. Few things that just make me a little uncomfortable is we don't know for sure, it. Cuffs our ability to use the money potentially for DCs because this will take a priority. Um, I, we just passed the previous one, I was looking at doing something for the next batch too, but. Obviously, we're gonna cuff our ability to do that here, and thirdly, we don't have confirmation of nonprofit, I think. This stuff needs to be tight legally, we need to do proper due diligence, it's, it's a huge amount, but they're great projects, so I don't, I don't. I don't, I don't think it would harm us to get a report back and just make sure. We dot our i's and cross our t's, that's all I'm saying, so. If two is not gonna be done, I just ask that it be voted separately and I will ask for that, that we vote on separately. As it was originally published.
So. As Chair, I, I'd say. You're all saying the same things, you want to verify that it's a not-for-profit? It's, it's, it says in the motion that it has to be a not-for-profit, and by the way, I agree with that, it's what I've said from the beginning. And it's what we've been asked about, but from the federal government. Um, and so. I don't think it's contrary, I think you're all saying the same things and we're, it's just, um. Yeah, and so we can vote on one to seven and then vote on number two. But are there any more, I think we've exhausted this. Counselor Power? Counselor Tor?
The difference between two and seven? What's the difference here? Could somebody explain?
Through you Mayor Brown, through to Counsel Tor, um, staff's recommendation number two was intended to report, we always report back as Melinda indicated on the status of half. In anticipation of getting some clarity around the status of half. Uh, as the budget was released on November fourth, that was our attempt to suggest we could bring a report prior to January. Uh, because the federal budget were released in November, so that leaves enough runway for staff to do a report, that was the intention of number two. In my mind. Number seven says the exact same thing and is not necessarily tied to three through to six.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, um, all those in favor of one through, one. Uh, everything except for item two, we'll vote on that separately. All those in favor?
Through Mayor, voting on items one, three, four, five, six, and seven. Okay, and in favor, I see Counsel Maderos, Counsel Power. Mayor Brown, Counsel Keenan, Counsel Paleshi, Counsel Vicente, and Counsel Santos, and all those opposed? I see Counsel Fortini, Counsel Tor, and Deputy Mayor Singh, and that is carried.
Okay, item two. So I, I don't believe it's contrary, but I'll ask the chair, I'll ask the clerk to advise us.
I think the report back is the key and the timing of it is the big difference between number two and number seven. Number two mentions January twenty-twenty-six, but council had noted. Um, wanting to know after the federal budget comes out, so the report will come back regarding the half funding as soon as possible, as soon as that.
So, you know, I think what the clerk is saying is there's inconsistency on the date, federal budget versus January twenty-twenty-six. So I, I think if you just say federal budget instead of January twenty-twenty-six. Oh, you're right, join. But just to clarify, can you just say federal, post issuance of the federal budget, use the same language, let's not potentially contrary? No? It's, it's a deputy mayor's.
Commissioner Planning, is what's the difference between two and seven? If you vote on two, then you wait on the report back to execute the agreement, which is in three to six. But since you've already done that, number seven is just report back on what we did today and what's gonna happen when the budget comes out. So you've already voted on that.
Except it gets voted on first. No, it gets voted on first, amendment always gets voted on first, that's in the. No, he, if it's, no, because, no, because if it was a friendly, he would accept it. He didn't accept it, so the amendment, we've had this before, always gets voted on first.
Yeah.
Contrary, that's a separate motion altogether. Okay, clerk, please advise.
Through you Mayor Brown, the recommendation in the staff report was placed there for council's consideration, but it was not moved. The motion moved first, was moved by Counsel Keenan and is in red on screen. With number seven added so that a report come back, I don't believe that it's intended to say the report comes back after the funds are allocated. Um, or earmarked for Sunfield Homes, I think it's uh, the report back on the half funding. And what we're getting from the federal government, does that provide any clarity?
So what I think the clerk is saying is that number seven is number two? Okay. Okay, to the, to the planning commissioner? Yep, through you Mayor Brown, certainly clause five. Stipulates that no funding would be released until such certainty, that's my interpretation through the half program, so it. To me, the point is mute, it's all the same, but I defer to council.
So it's approved, it's approved to go once the money comes in, we're not allocating, we're not giving it out until it's here.
So to the clerk, the deputy mayor asked for a separate voter number two. Well, what should we do here?
Uh, the report?
Regardless, I, regardless of if it should have been voted on first, where are we now?
It, it was never moved, so it wasn't to be voted on first, but you can vote on number two as a separate motion. I believe it's covered in number seven, the report back. So if that request to vote on number two is withdrawn, then the motion is as it stands here. With number two struck, I'm not sure what the difference in the report back would be, perhaps we would have to clarify that.
To the deputy mayor?
It's really, so. I'm okay with. It's, it's really just the development charges at this point, so if we've allocated it, the development charge opportunity is extremely diminished. So it's up to council, if, if, it's up to the mayor too, if, if, if. We want to not use half funding for potentially DCs as a backstop, then make this decision, right? But, 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 it, it, but say there is a shortfall, we're taking that off the table with this motion. He agrees, he's like, we're not disagreeing, that, so it's really your, your mayor, it's really, yeah.
My thing on it though is, this is affordable housing, you're giving tens of millions of dollars and, and money back to those developers already, they're not building affordable. They were talking about two completely different things, it's affordable housing, which we said this was gonna be used for, not to further and, and give money from this fund. To, I, I don't think I would have been in favor if a motion came back to give it to uh, these developers again. I think, I think this has to be used for affordable housing, these rental units may not be affordable. And so we can't, so we shouldn't be, we, based on what we're doing, we shouldn't be using it for that, we should be, we have been using it for this exact thing, this helps us hit our targets. This is what it's here for, let's move forward, this is gonna be the first one.
So what, what I'm trying to say, I don't disagree with you, I, I'd probably agree with you. But what I would say is we're a hundred percent with just a motion off the cuff, taking it right off the table. I probably will agree with you when the report comes, but I'm just saying, given the amount. Given the amount of money and the budget we're looking at this year, I just think we should have a report in front of us.
So, okay, really easy thing, Steve, when this report comes back, post issuance of federal budget, number seven, which we passed. You'll say in the report if this is, if this is affordable and if this is a not-for-profit, right? Through you Mayor Brown, that's right, but by that time, we would have had hopefully confirmation from Sunfield Homes that they meet the criteria in the previous clauses. And Counsel Keenan's hearing it, he, he's hearing to hear, if it's not affordable, it's not for, not for profit, they don't, so we're all saying the same thing.
Except development charges, just want to be clear.
So is. Okay. So we will be back in um, half an hour. What are members, I'll defer to, who wants half an hour, who wants an hour? Half an hour? Okay, give me your hands for an hour. Two, who wants hands for half an hour? So who wants an hour? Two, who wants half an hour? Okay, half an hour back at one thirty-five. We are back in session. We are continuing with our agenda for ten point four, staff report downtown revitalization projects. We have a budget amendment for the enhancement of Main Street and downtown intersections. Um, and I believe it was Counselor Tor and Counselor Madero's on the list for this.
Uh, thank you Mayor Brown, uh, my apologies. Thank you for staff for the report. Just, I guess, um, just clarification, say, I did see, um, you know, I think the funding's good, I think it's uh, um, long overdue for us to revamp the, the area for us to get full maximum capacity. There were some, I got some calls from some residents just regarding some questions regarding, um, for example, the dancing ladies. You know, something specifics, but I think as we go over the design, is, will, will there be more opportunity for engagement? To just sort of, uh, I think there was also expressed concern around the Santa Taff monument, for example, did we reach out to Legion, those type of questions?
Uh, through you Mayor Brown, through to Counselor Madero, so a couple of things, um, to get to where we are on the Squares project, fairly extensive public consultation was done, uh, we will certainly be bringing back uh, elements of the design process to council. And I believe that staff already had reached out to the Legion as it relates to especially sensitive matters like the Santa Taff and whatnot. Certainly we'll, we'll continue to keep ward counselors apprised of those um, stakeholder consultations as we go forward.
Okay, so uh, I guess through you Mr. Mayor, so is there an opportunity if uh, folks want to provide feedback? And I guess they would have missed it, I know there is a proper window, uh, would there be, should they just like send comments or connect you with your staff? Or what would be the best approach?
Through you Mayor Brown, through to you Counselor Madero's, uh, certainly, uh, if you're getting comments directly by email, feel free to send them to uh, me directly. I'll ensure that the downtown revitalization group gets them, and then in addition, we do have a website solely for this downtown revitalization program, uh, which has a uh, contact information there that you can also refer staff to, and I can certainly provide that website to you as a reminder to your residents.
Oh, okay, so there is an opportunity for further dialogue and, and just some ideas, but in general, um, you know, what was their, um, uh, I guess there, there were some points there that some of the residents just had some questions, so it's good to know that they have some still opportunity to provide some input and, and meet with staff on it. On some of the design elements.
Certainly, and then, um, you know, if any uh, counselors doing a newsletter or what have you, we can certainly provide information for upcoming input and updates on that as well.
Yeah, and, and through you Mr. Mayor, yeah, the, the only sensitivity like, you know, the dancing ladies was for a counselor who I guess passed away uh, with cancer. So that was donated by Mr. Cuttrizola through Inzola, and then obviously the Willen Square per se. So there, there's some sort of sentimental elements for Branton Heritage, just to ensure that there's some opportunity for conversation.
Through you Mayor Brown, certainly, um, staff are aware of some of those, uh, I guess, previous uh, uh, sensitivities around naming of assets in relation to families. And we can certainly work, um, uh, through our asset naming policy and reach out to uh, any particular stakeholder or family for some one-on-one consultation, if that's what you're hearing as well.
Yeah, great, thank you so much. Counselor Tor.
Thank you, through you, uh, Mayor Brown, um, first I'd like to say kudos to staff that have been, I, I can vouch for the fact that there has been extensive consultations. Um, and then around the area, we had, we got to see the renderings in uh, City Hall and people get to do a walking tour of that, have comments on it, speak with people. Um, it has been really great, so kudos to staff for doing this, I, I wholeheartedly believe in investing in our downtown. We have the CFI project going on, we have a future LRT coming through, we have Riverwalk happening, uh, a lot seems to be on the go. Um, there's no doubt about it, and our uh, downtown really needs a major facelift. It's good to see the work that's already happened, uh, with the wider sidewalks and all of that associated with it. But seeing all that, I do have hesitation in moving forward with what I see here right now, so I'd like some clarification to fully get the whole picture on, uh, on this. So what is, like, what do you define as the early works construction of Kenwillan Square? Like, could you describe like what that works means?
Yeah, certainly, at this point in time, I'll turn it over to Andrew Anthony, our project engineer, uh, working on the project.
Andrew, Andrew Anthony.
Hi, through the mayor to Counselor Tor, um, so what we identified as early works was the, the revitalization component, so the resurfacing with granite. Uh, we have accessibility issues in the square, so regrading it, um, and then looking at the water feature and just modernizing that. Um, the other element, the second element would be the screen and the stage, so through the detailed design next year, we'll validate those costs. And we can bring options then for like a high level stage, low or medium costed stage. And then we can decide if we want to pull from other funds within the downtown revitalization envelope.
So why won't we do all of this at the same time then? Like, what's the rationale, why are we doing the early works now and then we're gonna look at the final design? Like, that's still, like, assuming that's still under the works, we haven't decided on it, I'm assuming we'll get like a presentation on what the final design is? Council gets to have a discussion on it, but why can't we do all of this at that time?
So I guess, uh, with the Main Street enhancements, through the mayor to Counselor Tor, um, there, there was an opportunity here for the intersections because of the timeline. So if we want to hit uh, the timeline for construction, we have to initiate the design, so we need to do that, because that's an eight-month process. In terms of Kenwillan Square, uh, we were prepared to try and do early works this year on um, some of the relocation elements, et cetera. Uh, but since we're in very early, we're at ten percent design through the competition, so to ground truth and further uh, refine the design, we have time next year to do that. Um, and it just allows us to do more within the envelope that we have, uh, because we, there are options. The, the design competition came in with a certain design with the screen shimmer stage, et cetera. We need to ground shoot that with our architect to see, well, what is feasible, how much is that going to cost, and then we can bring that back to council. So we just thought it was a good opportunity to reallocate funds and work within our eight point three million that we currently have left, to do the best possible that we can do in a cost-effective way and a functional way for the, all of the objectives that we're trying to achieve.
Okay, so my understanding then is we're doing three things, one is a budget amendment for the intersections, second is for early works of Kenwillan Square, and the third is the Garden and Square expansion. For the intersections, um, I, just going through that report, the original plan was to have something painted on there versus the granite that we're proposing now.
Yeah, through the mayor, so through, uh, for the inter, uh, to Counselor Tor, um, the original had like a durable paint. And if you see the images, and I don't know if the clerk wants to bring up the attachments just to show the visual aid. But those were identified as part of the interim strategy, so when we were reviewing the drawings, last year we had come here for a six point five uh, million dollar budget amendment to upgrade to granite. When we were reviewing the drawings, we just felt like that paint, the road paint was sort of incongruent with the elevated aesthetic, we were going with the granite.
I, no, I, like, I hear you on that, and there's no arguing on the rationale when you look at it from a design perspective. I'm looking at it from a resident perspective, when right now, um, ten point something percent of uh, tax revenue is not being collected. People are falling behind on their payments, everybody's going through a very difficult time, tough time, uh, businesses are shutting down in our city across everywhere in GTA in Canada. At the same time, I can't go back to my residence and say, we didn't like what we're seeing on the screen here right now, this never happened, we decided to enhance it, let's put granite. No other intersections across the city, like I'd love to see it Monday, you know, slowly creep all its way towards nine and ten, but it's never gonna happen. So, um, great to see the, like, I was hesitant, but supportive of our, our downtown plan to support the sidewalks that we got put in place right now. But looking at those pictures, those interest, it looks beautiful, that looks like buy, but it's not gonna work out here for us right now. Great investment, wrong time, that's the perspective I sit here with. If our city, you, you know, the economy's doing really well, people are happy with paying property taxes, business is booming, uh, great to make that investment. This seems like a nice to have, not a, we really need to do this right now, today, uh, this could be done three years from now, four years from now. Maybe things are better and that's the right time to do it, along the similar timelines of the CFI building coming up and the Riverwalk happening, Province putting the shovel in the ground for the LRT, we'll still have those timelines, downtown is gonna be a work in progress for the next fifty, twenty years. There will be a time to do that, I just don't think the time to do that is today, right now. So I will support, uh, going forward with that work on the intersection, and similar to that on Kenwillan Square, I'd love to see the final design, once we get to that stage. I, I don't think there's a need to rush to the early works right now, that's not a small amount that we're spending on early works. Uh, I'd love to see that full picture of, of um, um, Kenwillan Square, what it's going to look like, what Garden Square is going to look like, we commit to that and that's how we move forward. I'd fully support it at that point, uh, depending on how situation is, but not, again, not right now. If, if you could, uh, Madam Clerk, just pull up the motion back up on screen. And sorry, um, in the consultation with the Legion as well, could you remind me again, uh, the conversation about Santa Taff and its relocation?
Sure.
How, where does that sit right now?
Through the mayor to Counselor Tor, um, we've had amazing conversations with the, uh, the Legion, we had conversations in advance of going out for the design, because that was uh, an option, again, when we're looking at purpose-built outdoor event space, the Legion, uh, and that commemorative piece, and expanding it with a memorial wall was a bit incongruent with our objectives. So, uh, we've had several conversations with the Legion, because the preferred design did move the Santa Taff to Gage Park. We framed it as the, um, the broader, the broader objectives of the downtown, uh, creating, you know, a linkage to, from Gage to uh, Garden Square, then improvements to George, subsequently to George Street, um, and how the Legion sits on that, and they've been very positive. But again, we haven't nailed down the direction with them, it's just, um, showing them the possibilities and the opportunities of how it would look, the design would look on the south side of Wellington Street.
Just, just my comments on that as well, um, on the Santa Taff and it, if we're contemplating ever moving it. I don't know how I feel about that, to be honest, it's, it's something, it's a, it's a landmark that commemorates, um, people that have given their life for our, for our country. And, and I wouldn't, like, again, I'm not gonna get into sorry about that, like, I'll take back those comments, I don't want to get too much into those comments, I'll, I'll divert, um, the topic here. But, um, that's something to keep in mind though, once we have that final design stage come forward, I, like, more than just even the Legion, uh, I think there needs to be a lot more consultation just on that piece itself. And the third thing is the procurement, uh, for construction for the interim Garden Square expansion, uh, that I can support. Where the buildings are being demolished, that's where this is gonna happen, if you can pull up the rendering on the screen, the rendering looks really nice, that'll be a space that gets activated, that works out, um, because I don't think we have a plan right now for that piece of property.
So, uh, through the mayor to Counselor Tor, we have a proponent for Heritage Theater Block and Southern Block, and we're working through the process to confirm and do that negotiation.
But will this not, this won't overlap that?
It does, it's the exact same geography.
If it does, then I don't support it, then we rather go through that ultimate plan, like, we're, we're spending a lot of.
Not in time.
We're spending a lot of interim money.
Sorry.
I, I, we're just spending a lot of like temporary dollars. When we have an ultimate plan that's on the horizon, uh, let's work towards the ultimate goal here, not spend money in these smaller chunks here. So with that being said, again, love the idea, not a knock on staff, you guys have done an amazing job on this, really would love to see this happen and, and come to life. But when we're doing these interim measures and, and, you know, putting money towards granite on intersections and all of this improvements, just not the right time to do it, when my residents are struggling to pay their property taxes, when people are, you know, we're still getting angry phone calls about that. Um, and the next budget is going to be very tight, we're trying to find money in every place that we can. Uh, we had these great discussions on DC discounts and how we're gonna pay for those. We're gonna keep having those conversations at the same time, we're spending money right now, I don't, I don't think it's the right thing to do, so that's, that's where I sit with it. But thank you again to staff for putting a lot of work, again, not, this is not about the work that the staff has done, this is just about the timing, thank you.
Okay, Counselor, um, Paleshi followed by Counselor Santos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, Mr. Mayor, through you, uh, just based off of some of the questions, and I, and I think, because I'm technically old, uh, with Counselor Madero's, we were on, we were back, you know, this is going back a long time, and, and when we were making decisions to forward revitalizing the downtown, you know, and it was brought to us at, at that time, like, if we didn't pull the trigger, then everything was gonna, it was gonna cost more later on. And I think that's, you know, that tends to be a lot of our decisions, um, and I've said it before, you know, let's make decisions instead of, you know, not making them and then making them later, and then they tend to, to cost a lot more, so, um, I'm going to be on the side of, um, go ahead and do this. Um, I have a report coming up that's got a lot of money that, uh, is cut, that coming in, if council supports, that can go to this. And this is exactly what, you know, two and six, nine and ten are here for, to continue to put money into the downtown. Which sometimes we're happy to do, but this is going to, you know, for those of us that have grown up in Brampton, you know, hearing all the way through every, every stage of life, Brampton's downtown, Brampton's downtown this, Brampton's downtown that, right? And I've even said it, you look at, you know, places like Guelph and, and there's a place, uh, even in the Coorthas, like beautiful downtowns. And finally, we're gonna have a beautiful downtown, and it's coming, although, you know, the, all the amount of construction that's happening right now, I wish they would have, done it a little bit quicker, but it is what it is, that was again, a decision of council, not this council, but a previous council, that dragged it out a little bit longer, but happy to support, and I know it's a lot of money, and it's a lot of money for, you know, what is going to look nice. But, you know, you and I both know, growing up in the town, in, in Brampton, it was always about, oh, our downtown is that. And finally, we're gonna have something that's nice, and I can't wait to have the television remote, remote control for the town. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we do have the motion on the floor, two more speakers want to speak to it, I'm sure briefly, Counselor Santos and Counselor Keenan.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the support from my colleague in wards two and six, and the teamwork on this. And, and, uh, to be honest with you, this, um, the revitalization of downtown is not new, it's been an ongoing conversation for probably over a decade. And my residents and Keenan's residents and our small businesses as Vice Chair of Economic Development and the Board of Trade, have been waiting for our downtown to be revitalized and to be given the opportunity to be competitive against other downtowns and other municipalities. And staff have done a tremendous job over the past few years updating the downtown counselors, who also are board members of the BIA, on the incredible work. Now, as Chair of Community Services, Counselor Brower and I have the distinct pleasure of being briefed on all the budget amendments and everybody else's wards, on all your beautiful projects and rec centers and parks and playgrounds that we in downtown don't have. In our downtown, in terms of supporting our businesses, even throughout COVID, our businesses have been going through so much construction, and many of them are being shut down, and as Vice Chair of Economic Development, this is gonna help them. And in fact, many of the small businesses, this is exactly what they requested. And so as the local counselor, as Vice Chair of Economic Development, who has seen this process even before I was elected, even before some of the other community services projects and community centers and ice rinks and outdoor rinks have been even put on the agenda, my residents have been waiting for this for a long time, so I'm one hundred percent going to support it, and I thank you Counselor Paleshi for having my back.
Counselor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, staff, thank you for all the work, the downtown has been this ongoing moving piece, and, and you do an incredible job with your team, trying to keep all that, all that aligned. Um, I, I, I do notice that, um, the money is already from other projects for the granite street, so it's not additional funding coming. This is just reallocation from projects that didn't need that amount of money, so happy to, to, to be in favor of that. Um, and hopefully, the other money will be extra money there too, to go towards something else, I, I do agree with Counselor Santos. I think this is something that we need to get moving on and, and get done, I do appreciate the comments from Counselor Tor, fiscal responsibility, and we can always count on them. And we can always count on him to, to bring that forward. Um, but I do think this is important. This is, when we look at the downtown, especially those squares, whenever we do anything big for the city, that's where we're bringing them. Um, and I get a lot of conversations and Council Maderos would probably agree, um, when trying to bring back uh downtown, the Christmas parade, Santa Claus parade. Um, well, we need these all finished in order to really get that all done. We're investing in our downtown. We're taking down buildings. I think we need to keep the progress going. So I'm happy to support this. Thank you.
Counselor Visante.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and agree with a lot of the sentiments that have been expressed so far. As the one counselor who lives in the downtown together with the mayor, have to say that a lot of the work that has led us to this point. And this is an important decision point that has been just brought to us by uh, by Andrea and her team and by planning. It's an opportunity for us to um, really put a mark on a finishing touch, if you will, uh, on the work that is happening in the downtown. And it looks fantastic and it's gonna look great when it's all finished. And we've been asked to create a public realm that will be inviting and that will attract people and that is something that all of us can be proud of. And um, as a member of the BIA, um, this is what they were asking for. And I'm very happy that this has come forward because it does really um, put a, a, a polish on the work that staff have been working so hard to bring to fruition. And so I too support this. I'd like to see it happen. It's going to be extremely uh, beautiful and will benefit residents for generations to come. This look and this feel, this finish is world-class. And so it is worth the investment and the moment is now because if we don't do the work now, I fear that it would never be done. So let's get it done today. Thank you.
Thing wants to speak to this too.
Uh, sorry. Um, it was a good, uh, good debate, good conversation. I just have one piece of feedback. If uh, something I've noticed and I, it's not really related to the budget, but if we could greenify it a little bit more, add more trees. Yeah, I think you may have heard from a few people, uh, that feedback. I know I've talked to the C A O as well. Uh, that's just the one thing I noticed with the design, the lack of trees. So um, you know, yeah, more trees, the better. That's, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Counselor Santos.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'd be happy to move this as a Vice Chair of Economic Development, but also as the local counselor in the area. Um, and I just wanna say again, Happy Small Business Month.
Moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Maderos, Keenan and Visante. Record a vote. All those in favor?
Through Mayor Brown, those in favor? I see Counselor Maderos. Deputy Mayor Singh. Mayor Brown, Counselor Keenan, Counselor Plesch and Counselor Santos. And all those opposed? See, Counselor Tor.
Okay, let's get back on.
Counselor Visante online. How do you vote?
In favor.
And Counselor Power online. How do you vote?
In favor.
That's carried, sir.
Okay, to the clerk, our next item. So what's the, what's the next item? Is that the next item? Is that the next item on the agenda? There's nothing else left?
What she's saying is there's a report.
Yeah.
That's the next item, but it has to do with the presentation that I moved.
Okay, we, we, we
We'll move it with the presentation.
We referred that to the last item. Are you okay with it happening now?
Yeah, I'm fine with it happening now.
Report and the presentation now, sir?
Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. So myself and my colleague, Ahmed, are going to be speaking to you today about um, some, providing some information on development charge incentives for residential development. You may recall at uh, the September third Committee of Council direction was given to staff to explore options for reducing development charges for up to five thousand uh residential units across the city. Uh, the analysis and information we're going to share with you today looks at program elements and scenarios, uh, units, unit mix options and eligibility, along with financial and legislative considerations. Next slide, please. Hey, next slide, please, cause I just spoke to that. Excellent. So on the screen, you'll see uh, three scenarios for the program that we considered. The first one was to mirror the uh, current offering that the region of Peel is um, offering on residential DCs. It would be fifty percent reduction on the development charge uh, on a first come, first serve uh, option. Uh, the challenge with this type of program though is it's very difficult to forecast what the financial or the fiscal impact would be because you just don't know what's gonna come in through the door. Scenario two is the same as option one, but we proposed um, caps by housing type. This helps us provide a little bit broader range and better financial predictability. Uh, both option one and option two could be introduced and implemented immediately without the need for any additional program design. And finally, uh, there was conversation at the Committee of Council meeting about uh, a developer contribution model wherein a developer would provide something. In turn, they would get the discount from us. Um, the only downside to a program like that would require a C I P, which as was spoken to a little bit earlier today, there is some uh, some time to get a program like that set up. Next slide, please. So the financials on the screen are only for illustrative purposes. And this was, is how unit cap costing would look. So in mix one, we have um, exclusively single semis and towns, excluding um apartment units because we now will have the purpose-built rental program. The second mix would be a split between singles, semis, large apartments, small apartments, townhomes. And we would ask for a requirement that uh, any apartment unit coming in would be uh, condoized. And then the third option is a more of a high-density mix where um, you're capturing more of the condo market. Uh, with council's indulgence, if we could skip the next two slides and come back to them, just to speak about program elements and eligibility. Just makes a little bit more sense before we come back to the financials and the legislative considerations. So the next slide, please. Uh, one more. Fantastic. So I'll just quickly walk through some of the proposed program elements and eligibility requirements. Um, it mirrors almost identically what the region of Peel is offering. Uh, so if it was approved, it would be a stacking discount. The eligibility would, window uh, would apply to residential developments for which a building permit for footings and foundations is issued prior to November thirteenth, twenty twenty-six. And we've also um, added in an occupancy permit being granted within an eighteen-month window. The discount would be fifty percent to all city development charges. The unit cap would be five thousand, but council could also direct that that five hundred, five thousand unit cap be allocated by unit type as described in those unit, unit mix options we just spoke to. Uh, similarly to the region of Peel's program, uh, the DCs would be deferred until um, occupancy. And that would be by way of a DC deferral agreement. Uh, next slide, please. So we are proposing some exclusions that would include excluding anything that would be captured by the purpose-built rental program. So there would be no double dipping. By way of security, we would require that DC deferral agreement. The program would end November thirteenth to align with the region of Peel's timelines. And we've also proposed that there would be a funding or program re- review, like the region, that if funding hasn't been um, agreed to by the province by the seventeenth of October, that the program would be paused and we would bring it forward again. Um, I'll turn it over to Amit and if we could just go back a few slides to that section. Thank you.
The one after, yeah, thank you. So financial considerations uh, center around managing the balance between accelerating the revenue and recovery of the foregone um, DC foregone revenues. Um, so even without the incentive, there is a projected shortfall in our DC revenue collections. Our twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-nine growth-related capital program is around two hundred eighty-one million. And the DC collections uh, would be forecasting for this year is somewhere around thirty million. So we are well short of uh, what's, what's required. Um, further to that, Bill seventeen, deferral DC payment until occupancy will delay the revenue inflows. Um, overall, DC incentives can accelerate development and they can um, get us the revenues that we are uh, well short of now. Um, scale of incentives is, is an important consideration as well. Uh, right now, we have built our scenarios around fifty percent. Um, but we could, for example, we could change those around to ten percent or thirty percent. And that would uh, have an impact on how much we are foregoing. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, there are a few legislative consideration uh, as to what's dictated in the act. Uh, DC Act um, states that municipalities cannot recover foregone revenue from these exemptions by increasing DCs on other developments, uh, which implies that any actual shortfall must therefore be funded from non-DC sources such as property taxes or external funding from other levels of government. Uh, next slide, please. So that leaves us with few recovery options for these DC revenues. And um, you know, we had this discussion earlier and we can, we'll come back with a comprehensive review of uh, how these would be recovered. But the ones on this slide deck are advocating for external support. Uh, this would reduce our reliance on local taxpayers and align with senior government priorities, but that's uncertain. That's beyond our control and may not align with project timelines. Uh, the second one is we could, we could look at our capital program and reduce the capital program, uh, which will avoid the fiscal burden in the short term. But that would require scaling back or delaying the infrastructure, uh, creating service gaps and higher future costs. Uh, and the last one is the property taxes. They're stable and reliable funding source, but they shift the, shift the cost from new development to existing taxpayers, uh, increasing the property tax burdens and long-term debt obligations. Thank you.
Thank you for the staff report. Um, are there any speakers to the staff report? So, okay. Counselor Plesch.
So I'm happy to bring up the report.
Okay, so we'll move up the report. Do we need to receive the staff report first?
Uh, no. Um, as per the um, this staff uh, report and what we, what we have just seen, the program uh, elements window um, in relation to the region. That, that, that was based off of timeline only, correct? Carolyn?
Through the Chair to Counselor Plesch. So are you speaking to the
The one slide that we talked about, the program elements and the windows related to, those are just on timelines only. This is how it's, it mirrored with the, with the regional program, like the dollar amounts
That's correct.
are not a part of that, correct? Okay. Um, and then the DC shortfalls of two hundred eighty-one million, that's current today, where we sit, correct? That's not, that's without the program.
Sorry, through the Chair to Counselor Plesch. No, that, that's the twenty-six to twenty-nine capital program. It's future.
Right, but that's where, that's what we're looking at today. That's without the program. You just, without the incentive, you just have that, you have that in there of just to members of council, to be clear, where we sit today. If we pull that slide back up, the shortfall of two hundred eighty-one million.
Sorry, that's not a shortfall.
Oh, it's not a shortfall. My apologies. It's projected shortfall. But under the projected shortfall, it says growth-related capital programs total two hundred eighty-one million. So it's not, it's correct. It's not the shortfall, but it's, it's two hundred eighty-one million, twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-nine. Current, okay, thank you. And not seeing any other speakers, I'll continue. In terms of the um, other slide of the hundred and fifty-one million and it says, it, yeah, if you go back up to, there. And it says DC revenue foregone as if it's a hundred and fifty-two million at uh, fifty percent. It, is it correct in saying that that's a hundred and fifty-two million coming in based off the five thousand units?
Through the Chair, Counselor, yes, that would, if we provide the fifty percent uh, discount,
Yeah.
we would uh, we expect to accelerate fifty percent of the DCs coming in sooner than later because it will uh, spur the activity. But we will be foregoing uh, fifty percent of the DCs, which are equivalent to a hundred fifty billion dollars.
So there's a hundred and fifty-two million dollars coming in if we do the five thousand DC incentive.
And the fifty percent discount, yes.
Yeah, no, I see that Nash and thank you for continuing to show um, the, the foregone and what we're not going to be getting. Based off of our conversation that we had in, in the meeting, um, you had talked about going through with this could be a burden on infrastructure. Can you talk a little bit more about that? Um, the infrastructure burdens that, that this could potentially have?
Sure. So what we're talking about here, Counselor, is uh, that uh, we have the program, as you have indicated, two hundred eighty million dollars of uh, approved in principle projects for the period twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-nine. If uh, if uh, we don't have the revenues in order to fund that program, we will need to scale back that uh, that program over this period in order to better match the revenues that are coming in.
Okay.
I believe that's your question.
Yeah, yeah, more or less. And then, um, but some of the infrastructure that you had indicated during our meeting was it could put buses on bu- uh, stress on buses. We may need to, to purchase a, a, a new bus or, or multiple buses. Um, not even the infrastructure costs in the ground, but it could be, you know, on community centers, you know, operational costs and stuff like that.
All the pro-
You had indicated that there could be those pressures. Um, and, and yet this can, this brings in a hundred and fifty-two million. Um, and it's roughly five thousand units, which uh, I think we had said it's fifteen to twenty thousand people, something like that?
Through you, Mayor Brown, through to Counselor Plesch. At the current persons per unit, works out to about fifteen to eighteen thousand people, roughly.
Fifteen to, to eighteen thousand people, okay. Um, and then was there, um, you did a, uh, finance did a briefing note. Um, did that briefing note go through legal to get a, to get the confidential note attached to it? Do you know?
Yes, it did.
Okay, um, I was advised that it didn't.
Well, it, there was a convers- uh, through you, Mr. Chair, there was a conversation that occurred. So
After?
The, yes.
Or before?
There were two conversations. There was one before it was released, uh, and then there was one after, um, you know, upon further consideration, is this, uh, could this be a public document?
Okay. Can this be a public document was the question?
This, of the second phone call, yes, correct.
The second phone, okay, okay. Um, I was advised from the legal that uh, the first conversation didn't happen. There was a conversation, but it happened after the fact. But you're saying that, that's not, that's not valid. That's not true. There was two conversations, one before, one after.
Correct. I, I mean, it depends who, who was making the decision maker. I had a conversation with someone, whether that was the decider, I'm not sure.
Not an issue at all. It, it's, I'm glad that we, we straightened that out. Um, was there a briefing note uh, provided to members of council for the uh, other program, the rental relief program?
Uh, I don't believe so. Uh, like
Sorry, I'll ask now.
Sure, okay.
Sorry, my apologies.
Through the Chair, information was given through the report.
My question was, was there a briefing note provided to members of council and was that briefing note confidential? Hold on, your mic's on.
Through the Chair Counselor, uh, this briefing note was provided at the request of the mayor for financial details. Um, not certain if one was provided for the past report.
Okay, so no, no briefing note was provided for the other program, the program that doesn't bring any money into it by way of DCs.
Counselor, if I can just correct
Please.
both programs are exactly the same in nature. They accelerate the DCs to some They accelerate the DCs to some extent, depending on how much are the discounts. The undiscounted amount would still be accelerated revenue. And the same applies in terms of how they need to be made up through property taxes or other funding and so on.
Okay.
The big difference is the-
Let me ask that question and see if you can unpack it a little bit more. Let's say we're talking roughly around the same amount of people, 15 to 18,000 people. We know that that debt, that ceiling is now 2,000, right? Is that council's direction? Or it's still 4,000 and potentially more? It's unlimited, okay. Can I get a clarification? Sorry, Steve?
Through you, Mayor Brown, through to Counselor Plessy. It's my understanding that on the previous program that council endorsed, it's a cap at 2,000 and then we report back for any council consideration of continuing the program.
Good, good, capped at 2,000, okay. So let's say that, so that reduces it down to what, say, eight to 10,000, eight to five to 8,000 people-ish? And let's, let's say that this 50%, we move that down to a cap of, of 2,000 as well. So we're talking the same numbers, let's, let's try to anyways. And then what you're, sorry, Nash, I'll repeat what you, what you had just mentioned, please?
That the two programs would be, would essentially have the same impacts in terms of that there will be foregone DCs, but they will also accelerate part of the DCs that are collected and that they will have to be made by other funding sources, either external funding or, or through property taxes and so on.
Fingers crossed. So that's what I need to understand, Nash, is so the one program on the rentals is 100% exempt from DCs. The other one is 50%. So, so walk me through what you just said. Both of them are, are, are a cost to, to the city, but
So, Counselor, not everything is 100% exempt in the PPRs?
Oh, it's not?
Is that correct? Yeah, there is. We'll give more, some more details.
Through the Chair, so not everything is 100% exempted depending on the housing type. So if it's a single bedroom, studio, two bedroom, less than 750 square feet, then that's 50%. Anything that is greater than 750 square feet, two bedrooms, that's 75. And then three bedroom plus a two-bedroom housing type with mixed component, that's also 100%.
That's, that wasn't the conversation I thought that we were having at the time. I thought we were going with 100%, but we were moving to, to push everybody to three bedroom. So three bedroom is 100%? Okay, okay. And, but we don't know what's going to be one bedroom, what's two bedroom, what three bedroom is. And we don't, and we now have, but we now have a cap of 2,000.
Through you, Mayor Brown, through to Counselor Plessy. Of the, going back to the other program, purpose-built rental of the approximately 4,000 units in the pipeline, we do have an approximate split of the number of one, two and three bedroom units. That was, that information was used by Finance to come up with their averages and their financial impact.
And, and so is that with what we have in the pipeline, is that what they have to build or can they change it to three bedroom?
Through, through you, Mayor Brown, through to Counselor Plessy. Unless there's a change to their site plan that we have right now, I would assume that those proponents would build what we have in the pipeline unless there's any change. Presumably, based on today's decision by council, an applicant could go back and change their site plan if they still felt they met the other elements of the criteria for the program qualification.
Okay, so, so it can be changed, but we have capped the ceiling at 2,000? Okay. I don't necessarily have a motion and I wanted to really put together something for council to be able to support, but I don't see anybody on the board. So I guess what I'll do is, is ask that we reduce the amount of units down to 2,000 and put a 50% reduction based off of, based off of staff's recommendations on how to manage the program.
Since there's no one on the board, I thought there would be some additional comments. Counselor Plessy, just for your information, I had heard that you had complained that the briefing note was in, in, in camera on, at planning committee?
I didn't say it was in camera.
It was confidential, more confidential.
It was more confidential.
Yeah, and so I said I agree with Counselor Plessy, I want to hear the legal justification for why it was in camera, because I felt that it's always better to put everything in the open. And that's what sparked the second conversation was, I agreed with your assessment. It was about potential lawsuits from those that missed out on the, on the, on the program. We deal with that regionally, it's a reality, people can make claims, but I, I think there's no problem having that in, in public consumption. In terms of the briefing note, you had said we need to get, have a meeting with Finance about this. It was scheduled for this coming Thursday and you said that you wanted to bring it to planning. And so I told staff that I'm not available for the briefing on Monday, but to provide it to all of council before planning, based on the request that you had that you were going to bring it to Monday. So both were actually in response to your request.
It was more so just the, just the presentation that I wanted to bring on Monday, but that, that didn't happen because of, for whatever reason, I think it was important for everybody to know. But if we're going to make that briefing note public, then I want to be able to use some of the numbers that staff had indicated in that, in that briefing note in particular. And, and I have to say, I feel like, you know, when the mayor, I'll ask you, Nash. So I, I feel like when you're presenting upon this and you're giving your best advice to, you know, giving us the best information possible. The information that you're giving about this program that I seem to be spearheading is a lot different than the information that I think you're giving us about the mayor's program that he's spearheading, where it's different, different dialogue, different conversation. And, and I don't know if you wrote the briefing note or whoever wrote the briefing note and I said it Monday, you used words and terminology in there to ex, like I extremely feel to make, to make council not support the decision. Yet, hearing you today talk to Counselor Tour about the program that the mayor spearheaded was almost like you were trying to talk him into supporting it. Like it's, that's the way I kind of felt. Is it different?
Yeah.
When, when a counselor brings forward a program or when the mayor brings forward a program, do you feel that it's different?
Thank you, Counselor. Through the Chair, I just want to start by saying that the briefing note is already public. It's actually currently attached to the report that's posted on the, on the website.
Oh, great, thanks.
So it's already available and so on. And to the other point, absolutely not, Counselor. If, if the briefing note seems, as you said, like maybe strongly worded and so on, it actually has exactly the same information that we have in the presentation today. The only reason might, it might sound a little stronger, it's the order of magnitude of the foregone DCs in this case. For a city our size, 150 million dollars in foregone DCs and having to make it through other means, it's a very, very sizable decision. And that's why it might have like come in a little strongly worded.
I appreciate your answer, Nash, and I, and I think that's a reflection of your character, for sure. Because, you know, we all support, trust and love the fact that, you know, you're at the helm steering this ship financially. So I appreciate your, that was a tough question and I, and I knew that you'd be able to answer it and I appreciate it. In terms of some of the dollar amounts that, you know, but what you, what you just kind of said in terms of the money, the pe, the way, where people are going in those three locations or four, if they're, if they're the MTSAs. And sorry, I'm ta, I'm taking now because there's no, there wasn't any speakers before, so I'm taking it over again. Those, those are very specific areas. When we're talking about the, the potential for now, the same amount of people that we were talking about before, but scattering it throughout the city, it, to me, those, those areas would be more, it'd be more in, in, you know, intensified and it would be more, you know, strain on any of the infrastructure that, that we have in place or even that we have coming up, as opposed to just sprinkling it across the city. Don't you agree or you don't agree with that?
Thank you, Counselor. So Counselor, on that, even though I fully understand your point in terms of utilizing existing infrastructure in these areas, which would put a bit less strain on further infrastructure because we're utilizing existing capacity. From financial perspective, these funds really are not dedicated. They don't come from a certain area and they get dedicated only to that area. They come from all different developments all over the city, including in this case, these specific ones. And they fund those 280 million dollars of approved in principle projects going forward. So even though I fully understand the point you're talking about it and so on, from a financial perspective, it really doesn't matter where exactly they come from because they still go to all these projects across the city.
Then you know what my next question is going to be then, Nash? Of the 281 million, this program, I'm not going to say it's my program because really I don't care what anybody does, I'm not, I, I thought that it was the best thing for us to do because it was bringing in 152 million dollars as opposed to zero. 152 million dollars that could be put towards the 281. And the other program doesn't bring in anything. Essentially, could potentially bring in nothing.
Yeah. So, Counselor, it's again like the argument that we made before in, on our related discussion. It is short-term relief, but it is at a long-term expense. And as long as council is fully aware of, of the, how this works and so on, it's up to council on how they would like to do that.
Or you just supported a program that could potentially bring in nothing and could, you know, certainly intensify the three to four areas that, you know, people are going to be, to be living in, as opposed to doesn't really just put any strain on anything part of the city. But yes, there's 281 million, that's what, you know, needs to be made up for. I just feel like this program brings in 152 million, like it's, maybe I'm missing something and I hope one of my council colleagues can certainly point and, and put a finger on it.
Okay, since
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Since I've been named, I'll just respond. First of all, not my initiative. The last two development charge incentive programs for employment land was brought forth through economic development. I believe Counselor Tour put it forward. For purpose-built rentals, it was the staff recommendations that then got amended by the four downtown counselors in two different fashions. And in terms of this, it's my job to relay to council concerns that the budget half has. Treasurer Nass and Budget Chief Officer Mederos requested a meeting concerned that this would hemorrhage the city's financial position, not a meeting I requested. And instead of it being presented to just me, I said presented, actually, the first thing I said is please sit down with Counselor Plessy. And then, when you said it was going to be expedited, I said share the briefing with everyone. Yeah. Point of order. Yeah. Counselor Plessy.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, through you, to you, Mr. Mayor. So Finance came to you and said like this, this has the, they didn't come to you about the purpose-built, built rental? That has, considering a bigger constraint on the city?
They presented at the workshop.
No, I realize that.
But what's the point of order?
That's my, that was my point of order. They never came to, they never came to you.
That's not, that's not a point of order.
Nope, it, it was a comment that you made. It's a point of order or a clarification?
I'll go to the clerk, is that a point of order?
A point of order would be something from the procedural bylaw not being followed, so it, it might be a
Point of clarification.
But not a point of order.
Okay, so a point of clarification?
Oh, a point of clarification, yeah, that's what I meant to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much, appreciate it. So they didn't come to you?
No, on, on yours and the-
And I never said that, I, I didn't mean to say that you were spearheading this. It was you, you called the media, you, you were bringing this forward, right? And, and what I know is Finance staff knew that you were supportive of this. And that's why they went lighter in terms of providing the information.
So I, I don't think this is a point of clarification.
You didn't support this program so that your, so Finance staff went harder on it, clearly.
So not a point of clarification. We had the press conference after it passed council, Committee of Council. That you were-
Just passed council today.
No, Committee of Council, and you were part of the press conference?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't say I was against that.
Now we got a long speakers list. Counselor Tour followed by Counselor Keenan.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, through you. Thank you for recognizing my work as Sheriff Economic Development, for helping out businesses in our city, across the city, from the east to the west and north to the south and the downtown. Just talking about this report here, just hearing some comments from Counselor Plessy, one thing I'd like to provide is clarification. Seeing this report here and seeing the report that we had for purpose-built rental, I don't see them any different. It was the same information that was in the original report that staff had put together and was presented to us in the same hesitation I had for that report, is the exact same thing here. The only, the only way I see this differently is there's two different outcomes. One, the outcome is purpose-built rentals incentivizing two-plus bedrooms, three bedrooms and so on and so forth. This is incentivizing all types of housing. For me, housing is housing, whether you're living in a rental or you're owning a property. Although owning a building condominiums or in traditional type of housing is much easier for the industry to build versus purpose-built rental because of the incredible capital that's needed to undertake such approach and, and pay back over a long period of time. Those are the only two differences that I see here. You know, in, in, in what the outcome is. I will caution though, if this, like if we bring a program forward, let's say it's 2,000 units for all, any residential type, and at the same time the city has a program that has 2,000, for 2,000 purpose-built rental program, a developer has a very easy choice to make. It kind of makes the purpose-built rental program moot. You're not going down that path. It's much easier to build a condominium or any other type of housing and be able to sell it in the market, hopefully whenever the market picks up, versus trying to do rental. So wouldn't be supporting this again for the same reason that DCs discounts, without knowing where the funding is going to come from, that slide that showed the risk and how we need to basically, you know, in better language, beg the feds of the province to get us money, is not going to work out. I don't think it would work out for the purpose-built rental. I don't think it works out here as well, so. But I hope that, just provide some clarification. The amount of information I received for both the reports was the exact same. I've gone through both these reports. Some of the numbers are different based on what was asked, but, but I would say the meat of the, both the reports is the same, so thank you.
Next up on our speakers list is Counselor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I love the, the dialogue on trying to get houses built. I think it's something that we've been tasked since the beginning of this term and, you know, we've been trying to move every piece humanly possible as a council to be able to accomplish that. So I applaud everybody on this table for whatever part you take in whatever program you spearhead or bring forward or be part of because we are making a change. We are making a difference, it's being talked about. So all, everything else aside, I think that's where, that's the most important element here. I, I do have some just pretty, pretty straight questions. And, and to, you know, just to, on something Counselor Tour, just based on what he had mentioned on the developers choosing between one or the other if we do two programs. If, and I might be wrong, so I may need to be corrected. I believe that this program was for people who are already service-ready. So if that's the case, that they would be building these homes because they're service-ready, the other program allows people to come in if they're not service-ready, is, is the only two differences I see. So I think if you are going down the route of building these homes, it's because they're service-ready. So just, am I correct in saying that, Steve?
Through, through you, Mayor Brown, through to Counselor Keenan. One of the eligibility criteria for this was being registered, service-ready. I will though, take the opportunity to remind council, as part of the PB, purpose-built rental program, council's appetite was certainly to accelerate homes, so you, you know, they may not be as service-ready as these, but they're all serviceable. Also, the window for occupancy within 18 months would determine the level of service readiness as well.
Right. So on the, and thank you for that, Steve. For the housing program that we're discussing now, do we know how much estimated that would bring in in property tax? I don't think I've seen that or heard that number yet.
Councillor, we did a calculation, we expect that it might be around thirty million dollars in property taxes annually.
Okay. My next question is the hundred and fifty million so-called that we're talking about, that could go directly to the shortfall of the two eighty-one?
That could fund, in the short term, it will be funding to, towards that, yes, it will be allocated.
Okay, and the big caveat in the room is that we have to pay it back. So how long do we have to pay back that hundred and fifty million if that was the program that council wanted to go with?
Thank you, through the chair councillor. It will depend on like, how much are we willing to add as a property tax increase in the next budget? So if we increase more, we'll be able to repay, repay it sooner. If we increase less, it will take longer.
Right, so my, my question is, how long do we have? I'm hearing we have a year, we have two years. How long do we have to pay it back? Can we pay it back over fifty years? I'm just asking the question. Not saying we will, but do we have the ability to?
Councillor, I don't want to complicate the discussion, but we would actually, wouldn't be borrowing against the foregone DCs directly. We cannot do that, we're not allowed. We would be picking specific projects that will be funded through, through repayments, through debt or other ways that we use property taxes for. And then the repayment periods will be related to the assets that will be funded through those different means. So if we build something that has a lifetime of forty years, we could borrow for forty years and match that life or so on. So it's, it's a bit of a complicated answer, but.
No, but I understand it, so thank you, it gives me a bit, a bit of clarity. So I, I, I do think that there is something to be done. I don't know what it is, I don't know if it's the five thousand houses, if it's two thousand houses, if it's a combination of, you know, fifty percent for a certain amount, thirty percent, twenty percent, ten percent. I, I don't know what that is. I definitely know that we can do something and we probably should be doing something. So I'll wait to hear what everyone says, but I don't know if that's gonna be a report back or referral or whatever it is, but I really think we need to keep the conversation open to how we can accomplish this.
Councillor Pleschey. Deputy Mayor. Oh, sir, Deputy Mayor, sorry. Shows a line. Pleschey before.
Is my mic on? First of all, I wanna thank staff. Some of the reports we've had have been within three days and in a week. So I gotta learn some of the tricks that other councillors have been using to get it done appropriately because I could learn to get my reports up that fast. But thank you to all the staff for the work, this important discussion. A lot of passion because people are serious about housing and they wanna do their best and do their part. I've read both reports, rather than camera, oh, sorry, the confidential, confidential briefing as well. My, I came in, obviously, first we dealt with the purpose-built rentals. And so the biggest difference I saw was the magnitude actually, right? So I have the numbers, but if you could just state the numbers of the impact of lost DCs once more, just for the record.
For sure, councillor, for the PBR, we're expecting if, if it fully.
At four thousand units, but, but we passed two thousand units.
Four thousand units, that would be around fifty million dollars. For the five thousand units that we were asked to evaluate at fifty percent, that would be a hundred fifty million dollars.
And the reason I had confidence with the first one was beca-. Because I thought at the backstop, we had half a day. And then the next report, and originally solicitor will counsel, it went just for directions. So that backstop is reduced at least or gone, right? So then for me to vote on this and to try this as well, I think it's gonna put us at too much of a risk. So I won't be able to support it. I appreciate the spirit behind it, I understand the spirit. I know this is a demand of the industry, a request of the industry as well. And, but the way it is and just given the previous reports and motions and how we voted, I, I can't confidently put my weight behind this. But thank you to staff, thank you for all the work you did.
Councillor Pleschey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know about the comment that we'll bring in something forward quickly in games. I, from the beginning, I asked for this to come to the twenty-second. You said funny, what did you say? And you, the funny thing that councillors do to bring things forward quicker, is that what you said?
No, the techniques, like the.
The techniques?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I asked for this to come on the twenty-second from the beginning. Okay, I, I wasn't sure, that's why I was throwing it back out there. Yeah, okay. No, no, and it. I know you're, can you turn his mic on so he can, so he can.
Speed and the, it came, so I wanted to credit staff, but it was not anything that you.
And we were just talking about this report and I had originally asked for it to come on the twenty-second, which is now here on the, which was, was going to come on the twenty-second, but is now on the twenty-fourth here today, that's all. And, but you had made that comment in talking about this report. So that's why I, thank you councillor, Deputy Mayor Singh. For the, for the DC, do we, do we have to open up the DC bylaw when we're looking at, you know, construction prices, cost for, you know, sidewalks, for interest that we, that we need to pay ourselves? Land purchase dollars that we put in, into, that we budget for accordingly based off the DC bylaw? Do we have to do that? Do you know?
Through the chair councillor. When the DC study is completed in order to, to put the new DC bylaw in, all these factors are considered, they're taken into account and they're built into the calculation in order to come up with the rates that will be then determined by the new DC bylaws. Until the new DC bylaw is renewed with and so on. In between that, we have to stay with the rates that were determined by the study at that time. And so on, that will become, because it's also an equity between all the different DC payers that they have paid for certain service and infrastructure to be put in place and that's why they're paying those rates. That's why we can't change them without, in between, without compensating from other sources. We can only do a new DC study at that time with all the inputs at that time and then a new rates can be imposed that will go to everybody.
Okay, and then we're working off of what DC bylaw review, two, four years ago, two years ago?
Last year.
Last year?
Yeah, they came into account, sorry, in January, I believe now.
January of this year, last year?
Yeah, this year.
It came into account January of this year, but the work would have been doing all of last year's probably.
Twenty, twenty-four.
Okay. And I just, it's, it's a lot different year we live in. Today's a lot different than it was yesterday, obviously. With the numbers coming down significantly, it was what we hear about construction costs and, and road costs and even land value is being reduced. Would it be, could we do any kind of amendment to, to show that? Or, or would it be something that we would have to start the whole DC bylaw review again? And when do we have to do, every four years?
The, yeah, we were on the cycle of, I believe, five years, not four years. But we have now more flexibility in order to decide that when is the time to do a new DC study with the. Seventeen.
Okay. I, and I only, I only wonder that is if there, if there are potentially not, I don't wanna say inflated costs, but costs that were higher back then than are today could be, there could be an opportunity here for us to, to, to relook at some of those costs are, including the interest costs. And I don't know how we calculate that interest cost on the payback. Is it the Bank of Canada interest rate? And that's fallen twice since our DC review, has it not? Did it fall once in the spring and then just the other day?
We don't usually use the, the like. We look at the long-term projections for, for the rates and that's what we use in the studies usually. It's not like what's currently applicable. We look at like, what are the projections over the next five years during the DC study and we use those rates? So it wouldn't, it wouldn't really be.
Today that we use to pay us, to pay back? What's the interest rate that we use now? What is the number?
Currently, we're, we're making about four percent on our investment portfolio.
No, I, like, I mean in terms of what we pay ourselves back at the borrowing rate.
We would be using that as a.
Four percent. We charge ourselves for borrowing.
Yeah.
And we pay ourselves four percent. Which I don't, I'm fully understand, but, okay, I just had those questions. Thank you, I think it'd be, it'd be, I think it'd be good for us to potentially relook at and maybe, do we put it up against the private sector?
Councillor, if I can just add to, to my previous answer. We actually, in our previous DC study, we said that we would be doing our next DC studied earlier in order to accommodate for the download.
Nash, I can't, I apologize. Sorry, say that again, please.
In our previous DC study, we indicated to council that we would bring our next DC study earlier and the driver mainly was that there is the download of the regional roads from the region.
Yeah, that too.
The city and so on, so that would be another factor that could really like take into account when do we need to do the next DC study. Also keep in mind like the amount of work and effort that goes into these DC studies and so on is very, very extensive. So all that will also need to be taken into account about the decision like that.
Okay, thanks Nash, thanks for all your hard work, appreciated. Staff too, the planning staff, Carolyn, thank you so much. I'm happy to move receipt of the report, seeing that there isn't a really appetite to see if we can do something here, so happy to move receipt of the report. Thank you very much.
I was waiting for everyone else to finish speaking, just to say, but we don't have a motion being presented, so I guess it's for not. But just to say, we have a limited fiscal firepower. And I was hesitant when it came to purpose-built rentals, employment I was intrigued by. Reason I was intrigued by both is those were our most acute shortages, employment and purpose-built rentals. At the region, our council took a position that we weren't in support of general DC waivers because it would hurt our capacity. We took a different position when it was backstopped by the province with that letter. I would say in this case, where I'd be open to this is if we got the same letter to the city saying that they will fund this. In the region, when we said no, the province came in in the interim and wrote that letter. And so today, we may not have the fiscal firepower for this, we can't do everything. We can't be all things to all people and, you know, spend money we don't have. But that dynamic would change if, if what happened at the region replicates its, itself here. So I'm not saying no forever, I'm saying no unless we have that security. But there's no motion tabled, so we just, the motion to receive the report, does the member have to be in the room to accept it? Okay, so what the change, the move, move by councillor Keenan, second by councillor Santos to receive the report. All those in favor, motion carries. Oh, sixteen point two added, added item. Last year, we added Nigerian Independence Day. And we forgot to, I guess on the list this year, when we presented budget. And that's October first is our, and that's coming up October first. That's a Megan flag for me this morning. Okay, happy to move it, seconded by councillor Mederos. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to seventeen question period? Any questions? Seeing none. That takes us to our bylaws? There was no referred matters, we accepted that on consent. Bylaws, we have bylaws eighteen point one, all the way to eighteen point fifteen. All those in favor? Actually, moved by councillor Tor, second by deputy mayor Singh, all those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to a closed session. Do members of council want that report today on the facilities update? I, I suggest we defer it. We should, we can't defer it one week? Can you handle? Okay, so deputy mayor is gonna handle that item in camera. All those, the motion, motion moved by councillor Santos, second by councillor Keenan to move into closed session for the facilities update. And how long do you need? Ten minutes? Okay, ten minutes is three oh five. Three fifteen better? Three fifteen. Three fifteen better? Three fifteen.
Okay, the clerk will, um, close out, close session, report out, sorry.
Through you, Deputy Mayor, in closed session. Um, item nineteen point two was considered and direction was given to staff.
Okay. We are now, uh, we now have our confirming bylaw. Uh, I have a motion moved by Counselor Tour and seconded by Counselor Maderos to approve the confirming bylaw. All in favor? Motion carries. Our last item of business is item twenty-one adjournment. Council's next scheduled meeting on Wednesday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five and nine thirty a.m. I have a motion moved by Counselor Power and seconded by Counselor, uh, Tour to adjourn today's meeting. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.